To dispense with formalities and we'll jump right into questioning. I'll be serving as the moderator. Think of me as a traffic cop, keeping things flowing smoothly. The idea is to be fair, even-handed, and show a little grace when needed. Most of you have seen or have heard some of the rules for tonight's town hall quickly. You came here to hear these guys and not necessarily me or the questioner. But we need the questioners because you guys think of stuff that these guys can't necessarily think of. And so this is what makes our governance in the county work. Forty-five seconds for the questioner, maximum. I'm gonna show a little grace, okay? Sometimes people don't get their thoughts fully together, but we aren't looking for speeches either. One hundred and twenty seconds, two minutes, maximum for each of the supervisors. They're pretty good at, yeah, ditto what, you know, the other guy said, and they'll add on something and that'll keep things compressed and move things along. And at the end, we'll have some closing statements of one minute each. I'm planning that for nine, or seven fifty-four. Boy, you put that in my head when you said that earlier. But no, 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 no. We're shooting for eight, but we want to respect your time. And if we're hot on some stuff, we'll keep going if the, if the crowd thinks that's appropriate. And we'll go from left to right randomly and to start. And so, anyone want to be the very first, okay, this lady right, right here? Oh, yeah, okay, okay. On the far left.
I'm Kathy Bender, Shiloh representative.
I'm David Solins. Please feel free to call me Sully. I'm the at-large, so I represent all of you.
Bill Davis, just call me Bill.
Ken Stroud, James Madison district.
And Mr. Collins couldn't be with us tonight. He is the James Monroe district.
Okay, to the podium and first question.
Hi, I'm Janet Murphy, and I live over in Hopyard. So I have two things directly connected to my community down there. First is, I'm wondering about trash collection at the pier boat launch. There's soda bottles and beer cans and slippers and flip-flops and people just leave their stuff there. And as it's under your purview because it's county, I'm wondering, I don't think I've ever seen anybody come down there and clean it up. So that might be something you should consider because it's in the middle of our residential community and it's public and people come in and use it and that's fine. But they really shouldn't be discourteous. And the other half is, I wanted to know why you are attempting to break a board of supervisors' approved proffered deal with Hazel and the Hopyard HOA by refusing to accept the walking trail that you guys wanted proffered to begin with. Nobody's above the law. I think we can all agree on that. You can't just back out of a contract and now we're in litigation. So I want to know, what were you thinking by trying to back out of that? That's my question.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. First of all, we don't own the boat ramp, King George County, it's owned by the state. So that's who we'd have to talk to about that.
Can you do that?
Sure. Secondly, there's, there's not, if someone, if I said, I want to give you a dumpster and I bring it up to your house and set it down, I don't have to take, you don't have to take it.
You asked to have it.
We did not.
It was in the proffer of the board of supervisors and now this board is reneging.
We're not. It says may take in the contract, doesn't say we have to take. But you have to understand it's on a bigger scope, I love other people answer too, that it's not the trail from how you're thinking about it, it's the liability of the trail. If anyone gets hurt, anything happens to them, the county itself responsible, we're also responsible for the maintenance of the trail. It also has to be open 24 hours a day.
It is.
Right. If it turns into that, a lot of those places, if you've been up in Manassas and other places in Northern Virginia, those places turn into places where pretty shady things take place and can't take place.
So you'd rather that the private citizens handle the pretty shady things that would take place rather than you?
I'd rather that you guys be in control of it, that you're, it's your area, you're the people that are gonna be walking the trails.
Well, we were confident that the proffer was done in good faith. And for us to maintain it, it's gonna cost $70,000 a year. And then it will not be open to the public. It will only be opened to the Hopyard residents. And we will have to figure out a way to keep out the people who would do the shady things that you're afraid to address. I'm very disappointed, very disappointed.
Thank you. Ken?
So, I don't like trash either. I spoke about it, I don't like the trash. The county's got too much trash. I mean, on Route 3, it's bad, it's bad on the, the other roads. I went down Mill, not Millbank, but Lambs Creek a couple of days ago, and I couldn't believe, well, I couldn't believe it, but I hated seeing all the trash on the side of the road. And there was a young lady, she just took an entire drink, like a size of that drink, and just took the whole thing and just chucked it right out the window. And I followed her home and had her go pick it back up. But it, it just, it irritates me that, and she did, I know her mom, and her mom wouldn't tolerate that. But it irritates me that people do that, that she, she lives on that road, and they would just throw the trash out. She said, and I asked her, I said, "Why didn't you do that?" And she says, "Well, I didn't want it in the car." It makes no sense. But, you know, the trash problem is something that, that we need to attack as a citizens. You know, it's, we're not gonna solve it by having other people pick the trash up. We have to solve it by having people not throw the trash out. That's what we need to work on. We still, it needs to be picked up. And how that's done, you know, people are like, "We'll use the prisoners." And I'm, I'm all about using the prisoners, because they say, "Well, they want out of the prison and let them go out and walk around for that." Let them go do that. Some people say use the doctor road. I'm willing to whatever works, but the number, the key thing I want is just stop throwing it out in the first place. And I use Texas as an example, because in Texas, if you go down there, you see signs that says, "Don't mess with Texas." There's a $500 fine for throwing trash out. So, that's right, man. You don't mess with Texas. I mean, so, so you don't see the trash problem. And, and I would like to see those same fines here. I looked at the report that comes out from the sheriff's office on all the tickets and everything that's done over the, over the, over that period of time. You, you have, I guess you guys have access to it, because it's in the agenda. Not one ticket or anything for anybody throwing trash out. And I'm like, why not? There needs to be some. So, and on the, on the, the HOA, we are limited to what we can say because now we are under litigation. But I want, because Hopyard is in James Madison, so it's under my district. I have asked to come speak at the HOA meetings. I've never been invited, okay? The only time I was invited or was able to come speak was ever GEV, who I sent there in the first place to come talk to you guys, was I came that night. That was the only night that I was able to come. The HOA's never invited me. I didn't hear from the HOA until after that vote. And then I get a call asking me about it. I'm like, invite me to the meetings. I would've come talk to you guys, you could've asked me at any meeting what's going on with it. But it didn't happen until after that. So, you know, and I'm not against that. But, you know, you guys kind of locked us down to some degree until this settled now through litigation. So, thank you.
Mine will actually be pretty short. I'll echo the things that they said. But the one thing I would like to add to it is I want to clarify, when it comes to proffers, we can't ask for anything. Those proffers are offered. It ends up being the back and forth of deny, 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 until we get to, you know, until it gets to a point where we, you know, want. But legally speaking, the county, the board, we can't say, "Hey, we want X, we want Y, we want..." Because I wanted to put that out there, one, to, to address that, you know, the board at that time shouldn't have, I don't know what they did, it was 20 years ago, but they shouldn't have asked for it. And there's a lot of folks on Facebook right now that are saying, "You guys gotta ask for more proffers." That's not how it works when we have developers coming in. You know, we, we can deny something and say, you know, but, but we can't specify what we want. Typically, the way we handle that is, we put everything on the capital improvement sheet, the SIPA sheet, the things that we want. And they can look at that as kind of a, a menu of things that they might be able to afford to, to give to us. But we can't just say, "Hey, we want a school" or "We want a trail."
I will add on to that. For a lot of folks that don't realize that the Hopyard proffers were done when it was a little more open season on proffers. In 2016, they re, I think it was 2016, the state of Virginia amended the proffer rules. And then they amended them again in 2019, and they're very specific. They have to tie to a project or, or some relation to the project. The proffer has to match the impact that the project will. So the hot, the proffer rules were different in, I think it was 2006 when they were proffered as opposed to currently. And because of the litigation, there's only so much we can talk about that. But I will mention something about the trash at the pier. From my understanding, that is managed by the state of Virginia, so we would have to, you know, talk to our county ministry and probably the Parks and Rec director to contact the, I think it's Fish and Wildlife that do manage that pier. And that was turned over years ago to the state of Virginia to manage.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Mark Morgan, Shiloh district. In terms of the budget, I spoke to a couple gentlemen here. We were talking about the utility scale solar project. And I asked a question kind of facetiously, you know, in terms of, are we just prostituting our land to gain money? And I was refuted by two out of the three gentlemen here vehemently not, because we have $40 million, okay? So, but now, the last couple business meetings, I heard, again, a couple same gentlemen now talk about money. "Oh, we gotta do something. It's gotta come from somewhere." So I'd like to know, what is it? Where do we stand with our annual budget? Do we need the money? Do we need to bring in that kind of business? Or my next, second part. How much does the budget increase annually with hiring no fire rescue or no police? So how much would that equate to the average homeowner? About a half a penny per year or every couple of years to cover that increase of salaries such as teachers and everybody who works currently for the county?
So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to respond, sir. Mr. Morgan? So, this is gonna be hard to cover this in two minutes. The $40 million. So, we didn't know, I didn't know, in coming to the office that there was a $40 million out there. That money does exist. I, if you go back to, I think it was our second or third board meeting of last year, but maybe it was the, the third board meeting, but whenever, I received the first briefing from the treasurer, and I'm like, what do we do with $40 million on a checking account? You know? And, and I almost lost my mind. Because we lost a lot of money as a county by not having that money invested somewhere. And it took great pains. I was told I couldn't fire the treasurer because of the elected position, because I did try firing him. And, I mean, because I would've fired somebody like that if I could have, because it would mismanage the funds that way. So, we had some meetings and he did invest the money, 10 million of it, and we started making money, the county did, off of that. It's still not invested the way that we would like, but it is invested. And we are at least getting a much better return now on that money. So, because we were losing a lot of money. And that's important, because people say, "Well, if you've got $40 million in the bank, then why are we raising taxes? Why are we doing that?" There's a few, and other people ask, "Well, why don't you just pay off the debt, right?" That's a question. I think Ms. Anna Marie, she's here, and she's always beating us up on this, holding us to task, I should say, better yet. And she does a good job of it, is that, is with the debt and paying down the debt. We need, as a county, we need debt. And you say, "Well, why do you need debt?" Well, if you've had kids, you try to teach them about finances, the first thing you want to do is teach them how to, you know, maybe get them a credit card and learn to pay that off monthly. And it's important for them to learn how to manage that. Well, as a county, to keep our bond rating high, which keeps our interest rate low, we have to have debt. So we actually save money by having debt and paying on that debt. We save money on getting more debt. I had nothing to do with a new courthouse, but that, we got debt with that. On top of that, some of you maybe voted for a, a middle school in the last election, and that was another $56 million that we don't have. So whenever you ask, "Well, why do we need money?" And "How much do we raise taxes?" Well, you know, that $56 million, and, you know, you'd have to do the math to see how many citizens, 27,000 citizens, 28,000 citizens, and, and how much they're gonna have to pay to make up $56 million over the debt to pay for this middle school and such, there's a lot of money there. And, and if you go back, we didn't, I didn't run, build it and run, Sully, we didn't run on raising taxes. Okay? And I know, I didn't vote for the new middle school. So, we're gonna have to pay for one, though. If, if we end up building it, we're gonna have to pay for one. Okay? And then people are gonna complain about that. So we want to bring good business in, smart business, to help pay, to bring that money in, it's gonna pay for these bills, to pay these bills for these things. And we're not saying that we don't need some schools, especially for the preschool, because we know we need that, you know? But there's other stuff's questionable, okay? And as far as the things that Sully spoke to, the salaries and things like that, you know, some of those things are inevitable, some of them, you know, there's some other things that could be discussed there. I don't know if I answered your question, but I'll pass it on. Sorry.
I'm gonna jump in with one figure, and I know, don't know the exact number, but for every penny that we raise in taxes, it's about $406,000 for every penny that we put on a tax bill. It's about $406,000 that we raise. So you put that in perspective when you think about debt.
And I will add to that, while that, a penny sounds very small, that penny is per every hundred dollars of assessed value of your home. So if your home is worth, I'm gonna go small numbers, you know, $100,000, you know, divide that by 100, and then multiply by a penny, that's what your new taxes are, you know? So it, it's a small number multiplied by a bunch of big numbers. So it, it does grow pretty quickly. Back to Mark, your question, if I remember correctly, last year's budget was about $135 million. This year's signed-out budget was just shy of $138 million. So, not a massive increase, but where we're paying for that is we had to cut out several staff members that we were looking to hire. So, we, the, the school was given a flat budget, a lot of other departments were given a flat budget, so very little expansion this year. We were able to give raises to some county employees, we were able to finally give some larger raises to our teachers because they've had a salary compression thing that's been in effect for some time now. But we were able to try to help them out a little bit. But as far as bringing in new positions, no, a lot of those were cut out of the budget so that we could try to maintain where we are now. Did we cover everything you wanted to hit? Awesome.
Okay, this gentleman here.
I'm Simonoff from Dogon district. Question, when is Dogon Wayside Beach reopening and how does the county plan to work with VDOT to make it safer for US 301 northbound travelers to access the beach and Barnesfield Parks since the new governance bridge has now doubled the lanes and there's more traffic coming through that impedes our ability to access our parks?
I'll jump on that one real quick, if y'all don't mind. So I've been chatting with Chris Clark, the Parks and Rec head of the department there, and I suggested the possibility of having kind of a grand reopening sometime before summer. It, it may not be a full-blown ribbon-cutting thing, but we're looking to try to get it back open before the summer so that people can get out there and enjoy it. One of the issues as far as having a, a full-blown ribbon-cutting right now is because of the number of people that we would be inviting, just isn't that much parking. So we're looking at, this is just an idea that was floated today. So, I mean, when I say it's in its infancy, just conceived. So, one of the possibilities is borrowing a school bus from the, from the school and having people park over it. Thank you. And shuttling them back and forth, but that is something we're looking into. We really are aggressively trying to get that thing back open so that we can enjoy it this summer. As far as the, the traffic on 301, you know, you and I have talked before, I, I think it's very impractical to, to put a 35 mile an hour speed limit from the, from the bridge to the other end of town. Traffic already backs up like crazy. And it's not our road to put that on, that's a, that's a VDOT thing. And VDOT uses 301, whether we like it or not. VDOT uses 301 as a pressure relief valve for I-95. So...
Smart scale? Why scale? Smart scale?
They could. Smart scale requires a, a match from the county, though. And something like that's gonna cost lots of millions, and we don't have that kind of money that we can match that. There may be other things, that's certainly something we can go back and suggest. But Smart Scale, as it currently exists, probably isn't gonna be able to solve that problem for us. But, yes, sir.
So, I'm probably the only supervisor that was here during the land swap for that property. It's, it can be very confusing, but MDOT and VDOT had control of that property, and they just recently released that property back to the county, because the agreement was whatever piece of the property that was left and what they used for the bridge, they kept, and what was left comes back to the county. One thing that did delay it was, you know, the, the crew that put together the bridge and demolished the bridge was pulled to go to the Key Bridge in Baltimore because they became experts at the way of demolition was so, so new and profound, what they did with the Harry Nice Bridge, the original one. They became experts in very complicated demolition. And so they were pulled from our project to go up to Baltimore to finish that, and that's why there was a delay in releasing the bridge because, I mean, the park, because there was, it was not done yet. So they had to wait till they came back. And so that's when, I know it's really confusing, but the whole land swap thing was very confusing. So that, just to give you some background material on that.
Before we move on, if you don't, if you don't mind, folks, I hope y'all don't care, I'll speak for all of us, but there's chairs up here. I don't, I don't mind having any behind us, if you don't mind looking at the back of our heads.
My name is Mark Feeney, and I live on Hoover Drive. My name's Mark Feeney, I live on Hoover Drive just behind Arnold's Corner. And the reason I'm here is because myself and all the other residents in the Arnold's Corner area, we strongly oppose the development of 121 townhomes in Arnold's Corner. And in my case, it's right behind my property, and I'm on the southwest corner of it. And we do, we're, we oppose it for a number of reasons. I'll just list four main ones, four main ones. The developer builder and the VDOT plan to prevent traffic from turning right out of Hoover, I mean, turning left out of Hoover Drive, you know, at the Route 3 intersection. And instead, they're gonna force everybody to initially head east and then make a U-turn at Fox's Way where the high school is, and then come back that way if they want to go over to the shopping center or to Fredericksburg. And the other reason, the other reason is, well, first, also, this is one of the most heavily trafficked areas of the county. And 121 new homes, that's gonna be at least two cars per home. So to have that right in the, you know, the most, one of the most, you know, busiest areas of the county doesn't make sense. And then three other reasons, I'll get to them real quick.
Okay, thank you. Forty-five seconds.
Pardon?
You've gone over your forty-five seconds. And, oh, okay, okay. Now I can show some grace. Go ahead.
Okay, school's impact is gonna be bad. You know, I've talked to many people, and they're concerned that their, you know, their children are already in overcrowded classrooms. Also, there's a concern about, among many people, about a probable increase in crime, including violent crime. Having high-density housing with some financial aid available to homebuyers is a perfect recipe for exponentially increasing crime in the county and causing real estate depreciation to nearby single-family homeowners. We don't want to repeat the mistake that was made with the single-family home, I mean, with the townhomes a mile west of Food Lion, just north of Route, of Route 3, which is right next to another single-family place. And the last point is, they stated at the library meeting in December, the developer and builder, that they're going to drain silt into Lake Monroe. And in my case, my house is right at the southwest corner of the parcel. The property goes, it's just 20 feet away from my driveway. It goes slightly downhill in my backyard, so 12 years ago, I paid to have a French drain built. And my concern is with the drainage nearby and then the two potential swim ponds that the develop, the developers calling for, with the highly permeable soil in that area, it'll go through and damage and clog up my French drain and possibly my septic system. So, thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. And we'd like the board to oppose the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Ms. Anna Marie, I gotta, I gotta answer that question real quick. So, sir, I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch his name, he's already sitting down. I don't think there's anybody on the board who's for that project. Okay? I mean, so that, that's one reason why he was like, all your points are valid and all the points that, that we've considered ourselves. I don't think there's anyone up here who's for that project. All right? I mean, as you guys know, when we ran, it was, we're trying to keep our rural life, but at the same time, we, we like organic growth. King George grew on organic growth. You know, people come in, they buy a piece of land, they build a house, mom and dad cut off a piece of property for their kids, maybe grandkids, and they have their own little thing. But what's got us in this trouble is we just kind of, it's kind of forced growth. You know, the answer through all the years was, we need more rooftops. No matter what problem you're trying to solve, we need more rooftops. And that has not benefited us whatsoever, especially when it comes to things like the service authority and things like that, where, you know, people in dire, where they're feeling that strain because they're the ones, you know, working that bill. So, there's not, that'd be a traffic nightmare to be right there. You're absolutely correct. And I don't think there's anyone up here who disagrees with any of the points that you said. I'd just leave it at that.
Hi, my name is Anna Maria Lovell. I live in Presidential Lakes. I want to thank you for your service to the community. I know this job is very hard, but you are responsible for all the decisions that you make in these four years. I came tonight, I came tonight to say no to this development. We live in Roosevelt near Hoover, and the traffic is already terrible. The teenagers drive like crazy, we have to be very careful when we walk on the side of the road. The only people who will gain from this rezoning will be the real estate people and the developers, like Mr. West. More people will mean more service and higher taxes. We want to know why you want to build these townhouses and commercial sites and this small piece of land. I know you want to make progress, but Route 3, 205, 206, 2, 301, already are crowded. We live very close to where you want to build these townhouses, and we hear the sirens from the accidents on Route 3 all the time. These developments will also bring more crime to our community. The traffic impact making the turn on Route 3 from Hoover, a right turn only will make more dangers to the exit from Presidential Lakes. For me and my family, I think VDOT should keep it the way it is now. The people who moved here had to accept the King George Rural Community, and we wanted to keep it that way. Thank you.
So, yes, ma'am, we, we, again, we agree with y'all on that. That, that's something that all of us have, we've looked at, we, we see the traffic problems, we see the other problems, and, and we're, we're in a violent agreement on that. For y'all that don't know, that's Ms. Anna Marie Lovell, that's the, the person that Ken was talking about earlier. She comes to every one of our meetings, makes public comments. I liken her to be the team mom. She, when we're messing something up, she kicks us in the line, gets us back straight, encourages us to do better. When we're doing right, she's our biggest cheerleader. So when she doesn't show up, we go looking for her, make sure she's safe.
Good evening. My name's Ralph Sante, I live over in Hopyard. So, good evening, citizens of King George and the board members. I really didn't have anything to come here and say, but when I heard Sir Stroud talk about how the fiduciary responsibilities of our treasurer failed us, that's sad. So, kids are our future. Why can't the county establish some type of program? And I know you gotta crawl before you can walk, because I heard you say something about the educators getting compensated, so on and so forth. Kids need to learn a trade. Trades have gone down. Yes, technology is the way of the future, the iPads and the iPhones, yada, yada, yada. But how about teaching these kids a trade? Be a carpenter, be a farmer, be a construction worker, be a plumber, be an electrician. If you put throughout the school year, incorporate a trade, in particular at the school, why can't they do that for the summer? these types of trades so there can be a future here in King George. That's all.
I will jump in on that one. Ms. Terry Rinco, a lot of in this room might know Ms. Terry Rinco. She's one of the biggest champions for the school and doing workforce development. And I think this is her second year, it might even be third year, that she's been hired by the school system to work on workforce development. And she's had two graduates, I think she calls it the pilot program, and they've graduated with a trade. And the last person, I went to his signing, pretty cool, he's going to be, get all of his training to be a journeyman electrician and he's working on the Kalahari Resort in Spotsylvania. And so she's, she has two graduates in this program and is trying to link up seniors or junior, you know, potentially rising seniors with trades so that they can pursue the trade. And I've always said, I wish we had more robust trades at our school. Part of it is liability, like, like, uh, a lot of people would like to have automotive, but there's a liability to that, so a lot of schools don't do that anymore. But I wish we did have a more robust program like baking, um, maybe hairdressing, all those things.
You're saying two, but two out of how many? How many students, how many teenagers do we have?
Well, the program is brand new, so you, you gotta develop a program and, and she's a go-getter and she is developing the program. I mean.
No.
No, there's other ones, but she's the, the cheerleader, the, the, the head of the program. They do have that. Yes, they have horticulture, they have welding, they have shop. I'm trying to remember all of them. Help me out here. Oh, uh, archi, uh, architecture and then the welding. He, I think, also teaches another trade and I forget which one. They've changed the teacher in the last couple of years. Yeah, I guess.
So, that's, that's what Ms. Rinco and her staff are doing at the school? No, and her, and her staff? She, she did?
Yeah, she's the head of it. She's the head of that.
Right.
We, she's the one who pushes it. It's called CTEs. And by the way, it's, it's, it's growing so well that they just received national awards for, from all the other organizations of all the other states. Okay? That's how well it's doing. So I, I know you guys are keeping up, but this is, this is kind of a school board thing and what you're talking about, which, which is what they're kind of handling. But we did, because I, I took shop in that shop class over there that, by the old middle school that I didn't use. I cut my, all my fingers off on the table saw to prove it, okay? They got to put that on. But we just earmarked, there was a bunch of money left over from last year from the school budget. They had money left over and we took $200,000 to get, we want to get that shop building back up and running so that program keeps going. And we're talking about like, like, we, we toured facilities where they have like full-blown kitchens, right? Where they have full-blown, uh, metal sheet, you know, uh, metal. Yes, it is, absolutely. In the schools. As a matter of fact, Terry's in the school almost every single day. She has, she's not even on staff, but she's in and out there and we have me, I just went to one of their last meetings the other day. But it's called, it's CTEs. You might want to look, just look it up. Yeah. And it spells exactly the way it sounds, C-T and an eats is on it. But it, it's grown exponentially, it's the only thing I tell you. And the kids are getting involved in it. Even our, our fire department has started working with the kids too about being able to hire kids right out of school. If you hire kids who live in King George to work in their hometown, it's chances are those people are going to stay in Lincoln. So, training them. Um, when it comes to like the, the data centers and things like that, and not everyone's for them, not everyone's against them. But in Louise, in Louisa, something that they did there with the data centers was they start, they had a mock data center inside the school so those kids could learn how to work at a data center right there in the school and go from there, go directly into the jobs. Because if we're going to end up having them here, I don't want to bring in kids from other places to come here and work. I want the people in King George to have those jobs, right? So we are working on that and I know that the school board is working on that, but that's really their thing with their superintendent and that they just come to us, you know, for the money to get those things done. But we are pushing them on certain things too. But you're right.
One other thing that she does, um, with her team, again, that's really cool, is they don't just have training on how to do the job itself. At the end of the year, they do what they call reverse interviews. They bring people in from the base, they bring people in from all around the local area, entrepreneurs, uh, the teachers, business people, you name it. And, um, they have what they call a reverse interview. Each one of the students has a booth and, um, we, the, the, the rep, not all of us, but whoever can attend, I didn't get to go this year, but I went to it last year. Um, it's like, some, it's kind of like speed dating. Have you ever heard of that? Um, you get like, uh, I don't know, five, seven minutes, something like that. And we'll go from, from, uh, person to person and, and, uh, we'll kind of do a reverse interview. They will, um, tell us who they are, what they want to do. So we've got kids that want to get neurosurgeons, we've got kids that want to start a, an auto mechanics business. I mean, it, it's really cool to see all the diverse ideas of what these young people are, you know, want to do. And they get hit by three to five different adults, you know, at different walks of life and help them, hey, you might want to consider this when you're interviewing, this plays well, you know, in the job market. So she, she's going end to end with this and really doing a great job with these young people. All right, Ken?
Yeah, so I really like the trades and bringing it back. So, um, I supported that. We supported, uh, the funding to get that, that shop going again. Um, like, there's a lot of momentum, I think, in the country to increase trades. I heard that, uh, President Trump was pulling some money back from Harvard, a lot of money back from Harvard and talking about distributing it throughout the country to use to get trades going again because we need the ability in, in this country to build things, make things, fix things. Um, and.
I don't think you should be talking about what Trump is doing at Harvard. I think you should stick to the locality. I don't think that you should be talking about Trump's policies towards education. This is not the right venue.
Now, I'm talking about.
Anywhere you want to talk about.
Yeah.
But this isn't the place. Because if you're going to progress into Washington right now, nothing's going to get done.
I disagree.
So, yeah. Thank you. What I'm talking about is the trades and the, and.
Hold, hold, hold on, hold on. Mr. Stroud has the floor.
So that the, the impetus in the country, uh, across the country is to start building the trades back and from shipbuilding, uh, to automobiles or whatever. So we, we need that in the country. And I think especially here in King George, we have some very talented people. I know Mr. Larry Emery up there standing in his way, he can build anything out of metal and he is a big supporter of the welder's shop and doing that over here. And, you know, uh, I've been over to his facility and, you know, I really get, I, I can't make anything. So whenever I see people that can make things like that, you know, it's pretty impressive. And I think that sometimes a college education is overrated because when my kids graduated college, they went and they had to pay their own way through. And whenever they graduated, they had a huge debt that they had to pay, pay down. So it took them years, years to pay that off. And where people going into the trades can get a trade, make six figures, I mean, they get paid a lot of money to, with a good job that is going to take them throughout their lifetime. So it's a good thing.
Hey, folks, there's a couple of seats up here. I know there's a lot of confusion up front here and finding a spot to sit.
Am I cutting in front of him? Mine's quick and easy.
O, o, okay.
Ray Williams, live in Presidential Lakes. I'm concerned about, uh, when are the tax bills coming out and when are they going to be due? Used to be they were due June 6th. Now we haven't even got the bills. This is the second year in a row. We have no idea what our taxes are, both personal property and real estate.
I can jump in on that because I just talked to Mr. Jones about an hour ago about a, a service authority matter, but he said they are right now at the printers to be printed. And I know, I do not know the exact extension date he has put on them. We could get that information to you, but they are at the printers right now.
June 23rd, no.
June 23rd. No, it has not.
No.
Yes, I just, June 23rd. But I do want to add one thing. I know I, I brought this up at the last meeting, meeting to put possibly on the agenda in the future, is to consider what some other localities do and how we have a tax bill in December and later, or November later in the year and only once a year instead of twice a year. It gives, it gives a little bit more time for the county to get the budget in order. And also we, they can, you can put it in a payment planner or someplace where you can bank so you'd be able to, be able to have that money at the end of the year so that you could like put a, a, ahead of time. I call it banking it, but you know, like a savings account where I put this once a month to, to bill. So that's something I have asked to be put on the agenda for discussion.
And I'll, and I'll add to that real quick, sir. We have put out a budget faster in the past two years than it's been done in years. We're, we're, we're way ahead. This year we did it faster than last year. Your other constitutional officers that are down the hall here, I can't make them do anything. I can't control when they want to get something done and get, and get that stuff sent out to you. I have zero control over other constitutional officers. But we've done our job, we've delivered it.
Well, yeah, that makes it there waiting on you.
You know, that, I can tell you that's not the case. It, and, and if you want to go in there and, uh, tell them I said so. All right? But yeah, every, we do work together, but our job is to approve a budget. We've already done our job. We've approved the budget. Now it's sitting on them, waiting for them to, to, whatever it is, get it, get it going. And it, and I know it's been there for a couple of weeks now.
Approved in record time.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been approved in record time. I mean, we've done it faster than it's ever been done. Most of the time what has happened is we have an audit that takes place at the end of the year. Before I took office, that audit, which was supposed to start taking place at the, by the end of June, wasn't taking place until August, so it was putting every department behind. The past, this year included, that audit will take place on time as scheduled when it's supposed to take. And most likely those orders will come in and we'll be waiting on them, once again. So I, I would say, I would say put some pressure on them and I, and I agree with it. Bob? We, we weren't late getting out the budget, but the budget in, in past, correct me if I'm wrong, has, has almost been June.
One time we had 13 work sessions and, uh, there was too many. But what, that's what suggestion I had made earlier is about moving it to one time a year because that does cause a problem to have to have the bills come out twice a year because we do have to wait, especially for the school's budget, we have to wait for the state to set the budget. Because the funding come, a portion of that funding for the teacher salaries and that comes from the state. So we have to wait for the final numbers and let, or we have to go back and amend the budget later. So that, that is always a concern. That's why a lot of localities do do it once a year. We, a long time ago, did twice a year. So that does cause a bit of an issue. And now also remember, when you have a budget, you have to advertise it. There are legal requirements to advertise for two weeks. So that also factors in that once you have your initial public hearing, it's two weeks later that you're allowed to then pass the budget. There are statutory requirements about putting in publications so people can come and give public comment. So we have to follow what the rules of the state are also.
So I, I tell you, what, what I really like about tonight is having all these people here. I wish I saw you more often and you came to the meetings because some of these questions that would be addressed at those meetings. And, uh, but whenever we came into office, there were things already not happening. And, and if you remember that, uh, like our first night, you know, um, some people went away and, and it took a while to get things working, um, and, and, and get things going. So last year was, was a problem. And this year it was, you know, it was really a record time. The new administrator did a great job, county administrator did a great job getting a, a budget put together. He actually sat and worked with the department heads for the first time and worked with them on developing a budget. And you think, that didn't happen before? And, and there were a lot of things that didn't happen. They would just take what happened last year. Well, and this is what we do, instead of looking at it and evaluating, and those things still need to happen. Um, and, and, and we need to get better. And there's things that are, that are being worked with that. But, um, if, if I can real quick, if, if you guys didn't catch what, uh, Ms. Bender said, is going from paying taxes, your tax bill once a year or from twice a year to once a year. By show of hands, how many people in here would be willing or would prefer to have to pay once a year?
But pay the full amount. Understand you're not paying half taxes.
Okay. How many, how many, so everybody else is twice a year?
Lower the tax.
Given that, we, we have the lowest, we have like the lowest taxes in our region. What do you mean?
Right.
If you're talking about the car taxes, that would take a legislative, uh, decision in Richmond and that's not in our purview. Because remember, we're a Dillon Rule state, which means the state decides a lot of things.
So, uh, today I was at a meeting, the Veterans Advisory Group, that, uh, Ms., the representative Tara Durant puts on, or she, she hosts it and I'm a member of it. And one of the things that Stafford was there and briefed, uh, Stafford Treasurer, and he went into, into detail on it. And they're really having a tough time because a few things have happened. And one of the, one of the key things is we had an elongated or extended war, two wars. And we had people that came out of those wars with, um, injuries that, I think they, they existed before. People had them. And we, we, you know, your, your fathers, your grandfathers, they had them and they dealt with them, with, most of them probably with alcohol, um, and, you know, things that we dealt with, some of us older folks, whenever you're, whenever younger. But today, because of awareness, be it, you know, these things, computers, whatever it is, or, and, and people are going to get help, uh, with, for things that in the past they didn't. And because of that, now, uh, there are a lot more military people that are getting benefits from the VA. One of those benefits, uh, there are people that are, that are 100% disabled. Um, some of it is because of proliferation of the way that the, um, um, I don't, I don't know, the, I guess the wars are being made. I mean, Ms. Santi here could talk about in detail, she works with the DAV on it, but there are a lot more recipients today and a lot more 100% disabled. In Stafford County, the numbers grew from a few hundred to, you know, thousands. And because of that, and the, that they don't pay prop, real estate taxes, if you're 100% disabled, they are now, this year, they have a $24 million deficit. $24 million. So what, what the state is dealing with is, is that, and this, this, this group of people is trying to address is that the residents are upset at the veterans because they're not paying real estate taxes. And we're talking about the 100% disabled.
Don't speak for all the residents. A lot of residents don't want helping out.
I'm only repeating, I'm only repeating what was said, lady, ma'am. Um, this is, this is what was stated. So, the treasurer of Stafford County. So that, uh, I think he was the one, it may have been another gentleman that was dealing with finance, but there are people in Stafford, there's a, and that are, um, they're do, dealing with a deficit. The money's got to come. So they're dealing with, okay, the people are upset over here because they're not paying or why, and, and it's not the way I think they're upset at the veterans, it's just the money's got to come from somewhere, right? Well, so Virginia, because of the high concentration of veterans, uh, is really having this impact. And it's not a state issue, it's a federal issue. And, and that's where they're trying to address it. So there, there's a lot more to that, but it, it impacts. So King George is also a, a heavily concentrated place for those 100% disabled veterans and.
You're not suggesting screwing the veterans.
Like, and we don't speak the same language, ma'am. So, but, uh, the, the thing is, is I saw in, in this, there was a very good document that the treasurer had put together and, and King George has a high concentration. I didn't even realize, uh, numerically, that, that working with the state, they've got this map put together. And I think it's, it was, it was a large number. So King George is going to be impacted heavily by that. So, but, the thing is, is I saw in this, there was a very good document that the Treasurer had put together, and King George has a high concentration. I didn't even realize numerically, that working with the state, they've got this map put together. And I think it was a large number. So King George is going to be impacted heavily by that. And I didn't even, I had heard about it, but I didn't realize until today and seeing that map. So, we do. That's right.
Okay, Mr. Baird?
Ladies and gentlemen, comment, first, ACT Career and Technical Education, a major supporter. I want to thank Terry Irinker for her support. Everybody in here in this room that can turn a wrench, that is a farmer, works on their own lawnmower, does jobs around the house, get the kids involved. Pull them away from the computer screen. Let them know what work is all about, get people interested in it. I've gotten three people involved in apprenticeships since I've been here at King George. One is a Caterpillar apprentice that works on the gym sets here in the county. So, and one's with Local 26 Electrical, and one is with the Open Shop. Question I have is, when are the assessments going to be completed, and the reports being given to the citizens? So we know the assessments of our property, so we can figure out the impact on next year's budget. Now, a question for you. You're all landowners, you're residents head of your households, as residents, not as members of the board. What do you see as a major impediment to your family's current and future enjoyment and future success as residents of the county? What do you see as your personal problem as residents?
I'll have to come back on that part, but I wanted to address the assessments. I know they are still assessing right now. And I know in some of the other localities, including down in Essex, when I was at the last VACO meeting, I'm surprised at some of their values that have come back. I know down in the Northern Neck, they've had to adjust their things, because they had some properties that were 60% or more that the assessed value in the current assessments. But I know at least for ours, the assessors are still out doing their job. And Ms. Southall, our Community Engagement Director, has put out several notices, so people are aware that they are still out doing their job. So that is something, at least, I would have to check back in and get the exact answer on that.
I'll jump in on the second half of that question, Mr. Baird. I've lost you. Where'd you go? Okay, I see you hanging. Awesome. I'll jump in on the second half. And I'm going to personalize that. As far as what the impediment for me and my family is, it's this job. It is this job. There are days when I absolutely love being a supervisor. There are days that it boggles my mind, what was I thinking when I did this? Things like this, I love. I love the fact that so many people care about our community, and you're out here voicing your opinions, and we're having a two-way conversation. If we could do this more often, this job would be a breeze, because we actually know what y'all want, and we try to work in that direction. It's supposed to be representative government. We can't represent you if we don't know what you want. So thank y'all so much for coming out tonight, because it's a whole lot easier than playing Bring Me A Rock with 28,000 people. I don't know if you're familiar with that term. That's a Navy term. Bring me a rock means, go fetch me something. No, 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 I didn't want that kind of rock. I wanted a big rock. No, 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 I didn't want shale. I wanted, whatever. You see where I'm going with this. Thank y'all for coming out tonight. But yeah, people not getting involved, but taking to Facebook and just griping, griping, griping out of ignorance, that drives me bonkers. Thank you.
I think the question was, what, as a citizen, what am I most concerned about, right? I think what I'm most concerned about is just losing our way of life in King George County. I think we're losing our identity. And what we really, what these moments are about, what we're doing right now, is coming together as a community, for us to figure out what our identity is going to be. You know, you've heard some of us say sometimes, it's like, we can't say no to everything. So you have one group going, we don't want this industry, we don't want this. But at the same time, keep my taxes low, but build us a $57 million school, and build us a courthouse, and build this, and redo Route 5, but keep my taxes low. The things don't go together, okay? The money's got to come from somewhere. And houses, the average tax revenue from a house in King George is $3,014. That's the average. It costs $5,000 to send one kid to school, okay? You put three kids, that's $15,000. That's not fire, that's not police, that's not emergency, that's not roads. That's just school, all right? So the overgrowth and overpopulation, yes, is going to put a strain on the residents of our county. And what I see happening are people who are long-term, been here for generations. There's a man who lives down the street from me. He's 78 years old. He's going back to detailing cars, because he has to, right? Those are the people. I don't want people who've been living here and been here for generations to be forced, they have to sell their land because they can't afford to pay the taxes on it, because we didn't look out for them. All we cared about was, where can we build the next hop yard, or next this, or next that? And we're not concerned about them. Those are the people I'm concerned about the most. I'm concerned with people who have last names like Burgess's, and the Madison's, and the Moro's, and all the people, and the Tolliveros, and the people who were even here before me. Like, those people should have say-so for this community, and what goes on in it, just like everyone else here should. But we have to paint a vision. It's easy for me to get up here and just complain about what I don't want. Well, what's the picture, what's the vision look like about what you do want? And that's what needs to be communicated, not just a bunch of people on Facebook complaining and guessing. And most of the time, I can be honest with you, people are so far off from the truth, that I just have to sit back and chuckle at it, because there's just no speaking to that, right? If you've made up your mind, without even checking with someone who knows, then you've made up your mind. I can't save you, I can't rescue you. But my biggest concern is, what is our identity, and who do we want to be? 10 years, 20 years, 30 years from now, what do you want King George to look like? Do you want to look like Stafford? Because when it looks like Stafford, your taxes go up to 90 cents, okay? You want more houses, your taxes will go up. You need more needs, that's what's going to happen. What's it going to look like? Because back in 1980, they had 40,000 people. Now they got 170,000 people. And the people I knew that grew up in Stafford, they don't recognize their home anymore. I still, I want my kids to recognize my home. I want my grandkids to recognize this place. I want to be King George. I'm not looking to be anybody else, but we got to figure out what that is. That's why we haven't raised them. Right. Anything. Anything, anything, yeah. And you're taxed on that. It's like, it's time to get a break. Figure out what you need, what you want for money. Base it on, you know the square footage of every house in this town? Yeah. Base it on that. I'm not happy with that either, but base it on that. And then at the end, when you come out, instead of paying these people, come out, do all these taxes, that people are not home, and everything else. It's ridiculous. I put a debt on my house, because I live in Messiah Point, ground is normally wet. I put a debt on it, get taxed on it. So my choice is to walk in the mud, or put a debt on and pay the town. People are settled with taxes. Yeah. I don't think anyone up here has raised your taxes, that I'm aware of. No, I was impressed, I was shocked, after two years, my taxes had been It's our goal, because everything I just said to you, I mean it. And everything you just said, you agree with what I'm saying. And so I am on your side, when it comes to that. I don't want to pay more taxes. And I have, I've had citizens walk up to me and say, well, I don't care, I'll pay more taxes. I'm like, that's great for you, sir, I'm glad you can afford it. And we can have a donation bucket out here for anyone who wants to pay more taxes. Okay, we can do, like, church Sunday morning, we'll pass a collection plate, and you can give a little bit more. There you go, leave it on him. Somebody pay for his deck, please. But as far as I'm concerned, I can't, I mean, I'm not looking to raise them either, so I'm with you.
So, Mr. Baird, on the assessment being completed, I don't know, I think Kathy answered that. If you guys haven't signed up for the King George Alerts, you go to the King George website, you can sign up for those. That is a really good, you know, I really like getting them. I get a ton of texts. Those are the ones I like getting, because it lets you know what's going on in the county. And you get updates and stuff. And it comes to you, and you don't have to look for it. But going back to before I ran, and one of the reasons I ran, and I stood at that podium talking to the old board, was about the assessments. Because, and I told them that the assessments were basically criminal, the way they were done. But I had some of my people, they went in, and I had them pull data from the county's website. They pulled data from previous years, and showed numerically that the assessments were done in error. Okay, just, they were factually in error. They were wrong. And that's what I based my statements on. So I had the data to back it up. And so I was critical of the assessments. And the assessments are being done, again now, and I have, I've been told that the property values are going up. The last time the assessments were done, they went up, the values went up way high. Some of the property values went up 150%, okay? And I mean, where there was nothing but a property line, you couldn't find the property line of a surveyor, didn't mark it, you wouldn't have known the difference. If you put a blindfold on and turned around three times, you couldn't tell the difference, and it would have been that much difference. Because the guy that did them, he went defunct after doing it. And the other, the three counties he did, the other two counties didn't accept the results. King George is the only one that accepted his results. But they had gone up, and some of them may be legitimately. But I know for, like, the folks that were in hop yards, some of their values went up so high, it was actually bad for them, because the values were higher than their home was actually worth. And that's not a good thing if you're trying to sell. So now, if they go up again, I guess for people that are trying to sell, I don't know. I don't even know. I don't know. But, but, but there's an issue there, because with that, you know, I think that assessors feel like they have to raise it. And they say, well, they're going up all over the state. And I guess they are, because property values are going up, or they're being, at least they're selling for more. Regarding the impediment to the, what I see as impediment for my family in here is, as was already stated, is I don't want this to become Stafford. And I don't mean it in a bad way. There are a lot of people in Stafford that, you know, and I meet with them, I know them, used to live there, that they don't like it there. And I don't mean that they don't like, love their home, they don't like the traffic. They don't like that, the number of lights that have came up. And they don't like the taxes. And they don't like a lot of things in the county that they don't feel like they have a control over. And I don't want that to happen here. I don't want there to be 10 lights, you know, just to get through town. That whenever, you know, I mean, I don't like going to, into Fredericksburg now. I spoke to people today that were like, oh, yeah, I come to King George. They'll come to the tractor supply in King George from Stafford. They'll come to the tractor supply here, just so they don't have to go to Down Route 3 through Central Park area to get the tractor supply there. So, you know, I don't want all those red lights. I don't want all that traffic. And we want to bring good business here, to bring some money to pay our bills, without raising the taxes, and without bringing all the traffic. I'm not an anti-development guy either, okay? I'm not. It's just having it in the right place. There are certain things you do in your hometown, and certain things you do in other towns. And I'm all for developers developing in somebody else's town. So.
Hi.
Next question.
Hi, my name is Barbara Gay. And I've come up before you all, not this board, but some of you all, about three times. And I don't know why, no one is saying this, but the water in sewer, I would love for you all to tell me, what are we doing with the water in sewer? I heard, when I first moved around here, that, you know, they was going to raise it, raise it, raise it for five years, and then they was going to reassess, and maybe it'll go down, or maybe it'll go up. And I haven't heard a peep word out of nobody about this. Second thing is, you all did a survey, or someone did a survey, about having a meter?
The irrigation meter?
Yes. Okay, so what is going on with that? So I have two questions, and I'd like an answer tonight, please, if you don't mind. I don't want to run around, I just want a straight answer. Thank you.
I would be the one to answer that, and I will give you to the best of my ability. So the first one on the irrigation meter, we talked about that at the last meeting. We had 101 folks that signed up as of May 1st. Right now, we're in the process of contacting the manufacturer of a strap-on meter that would go on your outside to do that. We have chosen to do a 10-person trial, and we were going to pick one from each area to do the trial, to see what the impact is on that. And we are in the process of choosing the 10 homes, so that we can do a pilot program on the irrigation meter. That is where we are at the moment on that particular one. Let me get your name at the end, is that cool? And then this, thank you. Sully's got it for me. The second one is a little more complicated, because a lot of folks would like their water bills lowered right now at the moment. But as you know, the Service Authority, you might not know, was created on April 21st, 1992. And there's a lot of issues about, I'll be honest with you, many different issues of how it was run in that time. I can tell you just from myself, who've been in my role, what I'm particularly doing right now for a year and a half now, we are doing the best of our ability, and including the board, some of the board here, and Mr. Robotham is behind me, who's our citizen representative for James Madison, to right the ship. Unfortunately, it took 30 years to get here. And we could spend hours, I could sit down with you for a long time. But we are on the path of doing the right things to make sure, number one, prepare our relationships with DEQ. I spent a year doing that. Making sure we stop getting violations, making sure we get these plants up and running so we can make the nutrient limits. At the next board meeting, we will have Bowman Engineering here to discuss the upgrades that need to be done to Dahlgren, so that we can make sure we do not have any more violations there. Unfortunately, the retrofit that was done in 20, I think it was 2015, 16, wasn't done the best way. And we've had to give back some grant funding, that we got grant funding to do those upgrades. Well, they weren't effective, and they didn't work. So there will be, need to be upgrades done to the facility, to make sure, number one, we stay in compliance, and number two, possibly, to be able to accept septic, which is, as you know, the haulers cannot go to Stafford anymore, when you have to pump out your septic, it cannot go anymore to take outside septic there. So DEQ has been in conversations with us, and the governor's office, about can King George at Dahlgren accept that? Right now, in its current condition, it is, cannot accept, because septic that comes from your tank is different than the septic that comes to, you know, if you're on water in sewer. It's a little more toxic. I forget all the terms for it, but it has to be treated a little differently, it has to be pre-treated. So there might be some grant funding available, number one, for these upgrades that need to be done, and for the ability to accept septic, because we could make some money off that from haulers bringing it into our, but there are, might be grant funding. But the number one thing we have to do, and they're going to be coming to our next board meeting, is talking about, here are the upgrades here to be done, this is the cost form. Then we can take that sheet, and like we were talking about, proffers, a business that is directly affecting that plant, like, possibly, an industrial user maybe wanting to use purple pipe, can look in that sheet and understand, this is how this business could potentially be impacting. And then they can proper the upgrades that need to be done to the plant, to be able to accept septic, or be able to, what was that, so? Purple pipe, oh, the purple pipe? That is, it's in the industry, they call it purple pipe, but it's the ability to send reuse water for industrial use. So for a data center in particular, I was surprised when I found this out in DEQ. And I probably say I go on phone calls with DEQ once a week, talking about different issues. So this one is, at the plant, at the Dahlgren plant, you would have to pre-treat the water. It goes to the data center, it has to be pre-treated. And then when they send it back to you, pre-treat it again. And then it's pre-treated at the Dahlgren plant again, so that the water can be put back into the system. So there are a lot of moving pieces, and as you know, those pieces come with a cost. So, but you can make money off of it by selling it back to industrial users. Most people think of it, because they've heard it in the news, you know, on the Freelance Star, the Fredericksburg Free Press and all, about data centers, purple pipe industrial use. That's what a lot of people think of right away, when they think of purple pipe. But there are other industrial users that can use it. Well, I did not say the bill has increased. But that's why we're working really hard. Mr. Rasabi, who's been here helping us for a year and a half, as our senior advisor, has 40-some years of experience in Westmoreland as a county administrator. He's been going over the budget with our finance staff. We've been looking at the budget to try to reduce the budget. But he's making sure, dotting his i's before he brings any proposal to the county. But there are issues we need to address, like the Dahlgren plant, because you don't want violations. Because violations lead to costs that goes on to the end users. So what we're trying to do is right the ship of the Service Authority, so that it is a good place, so violations stop, you know, and we're on the right path. So we have clean and safe drinking water, and, you know, your septic works right, and all those different things. But there are a lot of challenges with the Service Authority. And part of it is because, for 30 years, I don't know if we were 100% doing it the way it needed to be done. But I will tell you, in the last year and a half, we've been working really hard to have that happen. And myself, I've been helping to run the Service Authority, and as part of my passion for it is, I've been doing it for free, the job of the general manager. So that has been a cost savings for the Service Authority. And right now, we're in negotiations with someone for that role, who brings a lot of expertise, who will probably be the most experienced and the most positive thing for the Service Authority, if we can get him to say yes to us. He's supposed to tell us tomorrow if he's going to come to us. But he has a lot of experience with surface water, you know, getting to surface water, taking systems that need a little assistance, and with data centers, because he was part of the boom in Loudoun County when they first started in 2010. So I hope, ma'am, did I give you a good? And, you know, well, we are working on not doing that, and you can take a card from me, so we can get one-on-one. All right? You're welcome.
In Dahlgren, I have, most of my constituents are on it, we have the highest volume. So we stepped in last year, and, you know, it's kind of like, once you look behind the curtain, sometimes in government, you wish you didn't see what you saw, okay? So in January, I asked a simple question. It sounds stupid in my head to say it, but I was like, surely they've done that before, surely they've done that before. But I sat down with staff after about the beginning of February, I said, has anyone ever met with DEQ to figure out why we're getting fines? And people, let me finish. And people on staff, when I took office, when I took office last year, we were getting million-dollar fines every year, okay? So that's why the bill goes up. And someone looked, they looked at me and literally said, that's a great idea. And I went, are you kidding me, right now? If I go to the doctor, and my health insurance doesn't cover everything, I get a bill for 200 bucks? I'm calling, going, why am I paying 200 bucks? Well, you guys are taking a going, why am I paying 200 bucks? But you guys are taking a million, basically every year crossing your fingers, ah, another million-dollar fine, ah. No conversations whatsoever. So the first, if, if you're in, if someone has a laceration, the first thing you do is you got to stop the bleeding, right? Last year was the first year in about 10, 12 years where we didn't receive one fine with our Service Authority. Not one. Okay? So the, the job of, the job of stop the bleeding, we stopped the bleeding. And Ms. Bender has a big part to do in that. And she built a great relationship with DEQ. And there's so, now, some things happened that deserved to get fines. Okay? Things that were out of our control, that we would find that as we went on. But from their own language, they said, you guys are doing such stuff the right way. And we see that you're trying to fix things that we're not going to fine you. Because we're building a relationship with them finally. No one was having, I'm telling you, no one was having conversations with them to figure out why we're getting fined. It's ridiculous. They were just passing the bill on to you. So we stopped the bleeding. Now it's time to, so basically what we're saying is, we could go in and go, you know, we're just going to pay that, all the money off on the fines. But what's going to stop the very next year from you getting another fine? So it doesn't make any sense. Yeah, we are. We, we're trying to set up, you know, hopefully that there's some of us still around in another election to keep doing the right things. So we can build on something. But at the same time, the, I told people, after the first year, if, if we step down, we're finding a county administrator who actually did his job. You know, we're finding a head of finance who actually knew what they were doing. We're having county attorneys and negotiating deals. We, if we just had the group that we had, if I just stepped away after one year, I can say without a doubt that I left King George better than when I founded. I can, and on a stack of bones, I could tell you that happened. But we're going to keep trying to build on that. And the Service Authority is one of our biggest things that we want to tackle, because I promised I was going to do it. We stopped the bleeding. Now it's time to start doing some other things. That's why you're seeing infrastructure out there that's running, right? That's how we're going to pay for stuff. Because how do you have an industrial section of your town that has no, has no water in it? So no one wants, if Lowe's comes into town and they go, oh, you're not ready, because we have to build our own Service Authority, we have to put in our own pipe for you, they're going to go somewhere else. So you're seeing us spend the money that we have to spend. That's grants, by the way, and other things that we're doing that we've tapped into. And we're to put the infrastructure in. So now we can have businesses which now takes the tax burden off of you. We've done a lot in a year and a half. I'm telling you right now, we've done a lot. But the Service Authority is the big thing that we want to tackle right now. And we're doing all we can to pay that off. I promised when I ran that we're going to lower the bill and we're going to get it lowered by the end of these years. I promise you that.
I can answer that. All right. So there was a, there were two grants. One was from VDH. That, it was COVID money, some of the COVID money. VDH came to the Service Authority and said, we want you to do these projects. Here's $5 million. So the VDH grant, we were told by VDH from federal money, what we were doing on. And that is the interconnect with Canterbury Encircled to the courthouse. And that's for redundancy. There were some issues in Canterbury. They had some outages. This is so that there's redundancy in the line. And so they don't, you know, the theory is not to have an outage because there's another place you can draw water from. So that was mandated by VDH. It was $5 million. The second, yes, yeah, the second tranche of money was Senator, Mr. Richard Stewart, as Senator, got it for us from the COVID money that the state gave, federal government gave to the state. And then the state allocated it to different areas. Colonial Beach got money, Fredericksburg got money, a lot of localities in Virginia. Senators, as a Senator, he got a $60 million. That is what we are using to decommission Perkins Corner and to bring the water in sewer lines, new lines, all the way down from Perkins Corner, all the way down to Hopyard, to recondition Hopyard so that it is able to accept the load from Perkins and from the courthouse. And also, a little, you know, none of you might have heard about the Hopyard tier permit. Well, we have, when we went back for the courthouse new permit, because all the lines are going to be combined from Canterbury or to Hopyard, they told us, we would like you to do a combined permit, just one permit. So that is going to be tiered, most likely. And it has modeling that is occurring right now. I signed the permit, you know, paid the $9,000, 15-year permit. But the positive about it is that it kind of will reset the clock on Hopyard. It'll give us probably two more years because the permits will be combined. But that money came from the state. We did give a whole bunch of projects that, and they approved them and, and get paid back. We pay it. And then we submit it every month or quarterly, and then we get the money back. The one thing that we talked about last year is stopping. And you have to understand, I was the only person up here that was on the old board. You hear about the old board. When I was a board member, I was told quite a few times, you're not in the majority. And I didn't get information. So a lot of the Service Authority stuff, we were told, you know, that's this business and you stay out of it and you just do policy. We have found out a lot coming into the board and with this new board. And I've spent my time trying to right the ship, at least on the Service Authority side and the day-to-day operations. I'm here every day. I'm not getting paid for it. And we, we do, and, and my board members backed me up on a lot of the decision because we're trying to do the right thing for the citizens. But it does take a while. Then it's been 30 years. And unfortunately, our former county administrator, we almost lost the ARPA money because he had not been filing the paperwork and doing the required things that needed to be done to continue with this grant. And we spent a year very quickly getting easements, filling out the paperwork, talking with DEQ to save the money, and then implement using the money. And the product is all the lines you see all over the community, those are all part of that infrastructure process. And one other benefit to the Service Authority customers is Perkins Corner is a plant that needs to go and is needed to go for a very long time. Perkins Corner was put there without a permit. It was found by DEQ. So it has never really belonged there or meant it was put there for King George Elementary. And it's doing a lot more than it ever should have. And so it's limping along to the end. It has to be decommissioned by January 1st, 2027. So with that effect, we take Perkins Corner offline. Some of the chemical costs and other costs are going to go away because Perkins Corner is going to be gone. So it's more efficient to run in the end, three systems instead of five. Right now, current board, uh, the next board meeting, we're going to be talking about the Oakland, Oakland Park PER on the decommissioning of Oakland Park. That's our other troubled child. A plant that's really old, can't really meet the Chesapeake Bay limits, takes a lot to maintain in chemical costs. That, hopefully, we can get that offline in the coming years. But Perkins Corner will be coming offline. And, oh, it takes time to do all that, all that pipe you lay. You know, there are a lot of, remember, this is environmental concerns. You have to follow the rules. You got to follow the policy. You got to, you got to do the right thing for our environment. And so we're just proceeding. It will be offline by them, but we're on track to do it in the proper, it just takes time, unfortunately.
I'm going to jump in. We've dropped anchor on this one for like 12 minutes now. You've been standing there for a long time. Go ahead. Thanks for your patience.
Not a problem. My name is Brenda Pence. Um, I'm presidential lakes. And I first wanted to address you all. Thank you for what you do. I know it's not an easy job, so I appreciate that. Um, on behalf of the Arnold Corner Townhouse Project, you guys said that you're opposed to that. Um, as homeowners, my husband and I moved here four years ago from Northern Virginia to get out of the rat race. So my question is, uh, we've been told as homeowners that he can still build over in that area, um, like 70-some houses with the two commercial properties. Um, how does the board feel about that? And what do you see happening over in that area of development is my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think, me, me personally, we're going to have to dig into what we can do. But I, I'm against in any of the houses going in over there. I mean, I'm not, I'm not for any of that. You know, i- i- if I, if I could keep, I mean, I'm going to keep saying it, keep King George roll, protect our way of life. We're not trying to mimic or be like anybody else. We're the gateway to the northern neck. We're not the gateway to Fredericksburg, Virginia. All right? So it's, I'm not just protecting our way of life. When I meet with heads up of Westmoreland or Colonial Beach, Carolina, wherever I talk to, I'm protecting that. Because it's coming right down the pipe, right? And, and once it gets to us, it's next, it's going to be the next group. And Caroline, it's just going to keep going and going and going until this way of life, whatever it is that we enjoy about it, is just sucked up and gone. That's what the plan is. It, well, it depends. I mean, um, there's some stuff that's done by right. There's some stuff that's done by right that I can't control whatsoever. It's, it's by right. Something's, not on something that's by right, ma'am. No, I do not have any say-so about by right property. Do not. There is a, a drug rehab that's going in Dahlgren for by right, and I can't stop it. And if I could, I would. But I cannot stop it. It's by right. Might just look up that term by right and just see what exactly, if something's zoned a certain way, then nothing I can do.
Yeah. And that's the thing to remember is that, you know, what we want to do, what, you know, I speak because I believe all the board members are, believe the same way, is that, um, and, and, and I've had constituents, people remind me of this, and I appreciate that. Um, I, I don't mind being presented with, but, you know, I want to support the landowners, property owners. You bought it, it's yours. And if the law allows you to do it on it, then you do it. And there's things that irritate me. I, I have a, a piece of property and I bought it. And whenever the realtor showed it to me, uh, they didn't show it to me on the day that the neighbors had a motocross races. So, you know, and I'm like, well, if I get ready to sell it, I'm not going to show it on that day either. You know? But, but the thing is, is you can't stop them from doing it. It's their property and they have motocross races. All I can do is go and try to barter, you know? I say, look, you know? Um, the thing is, is i- i- if it's your property and you can do it, we try to work with our neighbors. I always encourage people, try to work with your neighbors, try to get along with people, you know? Do, definitely do things within the law. But this is America. And, you know, I wish I had done a better job of, I, I didn't know, to go look at the codes, look at the zoning. I, I didn't know that stuff. Um, I know now. And, uh, but you, you have to look at those things. The people, I say the people, like realtors, um, developers, they know whenever they buy the property. If they buy it and it's zoned agricultural, they know what they can do with it, what they can't do with it. They know what permissions they have to get and if it's uphill battle or not. But if it's by right, they buy it by right, then they can do pretty much whatever they want to do there. Um, that's just the way it is. So, you know, I mean, the negotiation piece, you know, that's, we're really limited in what we can do with that, um, like the proffers and things like that. Um, you know, we can't, we can't have those discussions with them. But, but we definitely hear what you're saying. I mean, and, and we need to hear it. And then there, there are things that happen as a process. It goes to a planning commission. So they submit the permits. And then if they need to change something, it would go to the planning commission. And planning commission hears that you guys can go to those meetings and talk there. And then they can, then they provide a recommendation to us. And by all means, you can come and speak here as well. So, I mean, at the, the board meetings as well as these events.
And the one thing that we, we just, if you guys are paying attention to board meetings, we, I think it's called ZOTAC, was just a, um, was a committee that we put together, a people in King George County, from every walk of life, whether it's a landowner, developers, real, just every walk of life, we put them together to come up with a plan to help us with what we're talking about as far as overdevelopment of our county. And they've come together with things and, and really tightened up some loopholes in the process that allow a lot of this stuff that's by right to take place anyway. It tightens those things up where there's just, it's how many entrances you can have into a property. You know, things like just all kinds of little things, the types of wells they have to have, just lots of different things that if you watch the next board meeting, you'll hear more about it. And just really tighten those things up so we can control a little bit. Like, we want no more super subdivisions. So we've made that happen. Like, there's no more, we're not going to have any more of those, right? So we, we're cutting down on that. But there's just a lot of things we're putting in place to make sure that even with the by right situation, that there's only certain things that they can do by right on the property, right? So we are working on that. Sorry. Go ahead. I'll, I'll answer that for you too. So we have been in negotiations with a group to bring a emergency room hospital to King, to, to King George, Virginia. All right? From all I've heard, this is, so some of you people, some people might have gotten mad because we left the FRA, right? Like, oh, we left the Fredericksburg regional lines. What are we going to do? The problem was, is the head of, the head, the head of our economic development, we were a member of the FRA, Mary Washington Hospital was a member of the FRA. So when I came into office, I asked my economic developer, go get me a hospital, go figure it out. The only person he goes and talks to is Mary Washington Hospital, because we're both members of the same club. He didn't ask anybody else. Once they said no, he said no. And do you think that Mary Washington Hospital in Fredericksburg doesn't run reports on 22485? How many times that credit card is run at their hospital? How, they already know much tax revenue we're going to bring in every year. You think they want to help us grow? They want us to be a subdivision of their, of their town. They want our money, all right? They want to shop there, buy there, everything to do there. So what we did was, we came in, I was like, well, it's not about us pitching as King George County, because they said that we didn't have enough people. We only had 27,000 people. We wouldn't have a big enough group. So I said, well, what about Caroline County goes there, Colonial Beach goes there, Westmoreland, all these people are driving by King George to go to Mary Washington. Dahlgren, till about 5 o'clock, is a whole nother city, right? With all the people, they have their own emergency, all that. So we pitched to people now, look at us as a whole. We've reached out to those county administrators and the people in charge. And we're coming together. And right now, we are, we are, we are in negotiations to bring it to the Dahlgren area. It might, I can't give you exact locations. But in that area, what has held us back right this very second is, you might, if you've been paying attention, there is a water leak somewhere in Dahlgren, and they cannot locate it. So we don't have the water right now for any economic development. So they're bringing in teams right now to try to help locate where this leak is at. It's probably a malfunction in equipment or something is what I kind of lean to. Two million gallons, you'd be seeing a creek somewhere popping up, right? But, uh, so we got to solve that issue. We have a team on that too. So, but. Yeah, it's not even just that, my friend. It's the fact that when, when an ambulance takes someone to Mary Wash, that ambulance is off duty for three hours, right? So imagine just having a place local where they could take and drop off, and they're right back, right back into the fight, right? It's going to save us a lot of money in the long haul. I'm sorry, man. Go ahead.
No, you guys answered some of my questions already. My name's Julianne. Um, when you said, what do we want as a county? Well, we don't want the drug rehab. I'd like a security fence around it with security. But moving on, um, what other businesses are you guys trying to bring in? At the other town meeting, you said you wanted to bring business into King George so we didn't have to go to Fredericksburg or Colonial Beach to, uh, do extra shopping. If we want to go out to a nice meal for the Mexican restaurants, I can't get a steak out here. I don't eat fast food. So, I mean, maybe an Aldi. How are you guys going through in trying to figure out and bring business to the county?
Well, I'll give you a little bit of that is, unfortunately, there's metrics that go into valve with certain businesses. You have to have a certain amount of rooftops, certain amount of traffic. For me, I would love a Wegmans. Because as some folks have heard recently in a board meeting, I have celiac disease. I can't have gluten. It's very hard for me to go out in this area to find anything to eat going out. Because when you say gluten-free, they look at you cross-eyed or they're like, what's that? You camping with wheat? Well, can I just put it in a separate bowl? You know what I mean? Like, for folks like me or other people have allergies, those kind of businesses would be really cool. But unfortunately, there's all these metrics that certain corporations use to decide to come here. Rooftops, you know, travel metrics. You know why Chick-fil-A came here? We got a bridge, the better bridge, which put more traffic. Because there were as many times people tried to get them here. And they were like, you don't have the metrics, not understanding that King George is the gateway to that. And we're very different. And we have a different kind of travel pack. But unfortunately, some of these big companies, they have all these metrics they follow.
Oh, that's not true. Back and forth.
There's a lot of rumors like that.
Rule, Rule Farms had a, had a choice, Rule Farms had a choice between the Dahlgren, the Dahlgren area, uh, where you take a right to go to Dahlgren to the base where that 711 right across the street, or where they're at in Port Royal. That was the two pieces they're looking at. They probably picked the most lucrative position. There's no competition, right? It's right on 17, right there. It's a 301. That, that was their choice to make. And we, trust me, we wouldn't run them all.
And there was a lot of wetlands in the area in Dahlgren that they, it was a lot easier to build on the Caroline lot than it would have been in the lot in Dahlgren.
And you also asked what we were doing. The infrastructure we're putting in is what we're doing. That's to bring in business, right? So there have been that piece of property right in front of, and right in front of Hopyard right there, that big field right there. There have, I know for a fact, I can't give names, there have been three box stores who have looked at buying that property since they heard we were putting in infrastructure. So the infrastructure goes in, people are going to start taking us seriously. You can't have an industrial zone where you don't have the infrastructure to support it, right? So we're putting a pause, a little bit on growth. Let's put in the infrastructure and catch up the infrastructure. Like, we, we got enough houses, right? Let's put in some infrastructure to support some business. So that's what we're trying to do.
So, um, going back to, you were asking what kind of businesses we're going. So for me, the things that I want to bring in, one is, like you say, I want a steakhouse or something where we can get, you know, um, I, I'm looking past you. I'm sorry, Ms. Gay. I'm talking to Julianne. But, uh, yeah, I want something where we can get, you know, uh, you know, a, a little bit more of a diverse menu. Right now, we've got like, uh, two, maybe three options in terms of the, the types of food that are offered around the county. The other thing I would love to bring in though, is if anybody's ever familiar with the Fredericksburg Field House, something like that would be awesome. Something that would keep our kids occupied after school. Um, when, uh, at least the, the three of us that had to do, or got to do, let me rephrase that. They got to do the candidate forum last year, um, when we were running. Um, one of the questions that was posed to us was, what were we going to do about the drug problems in, in the high schools? And my, my first response internal, and it was internal and I kept it that way, was, well, that sounds like a school board problem. But luckily, I was on the end of the table and got to go last. So I actually had time to think, you know, what would I do, you know, about that? Something like that field house would be great. Because my response was, the kids that are in trouble most of the time, there are exceptions, but it's usually not the football players, not the basketball players, not the band, it's the kids. It's the kids that are bored, that don't have anything to do. We give them something to do, let them play sports, let them, you know, take out some aggression in a, in a, uh, yeah, in a positive way, in a, in a way that's, you know, kind of, uh, guarded and controlled. It's going to keep them out of trouble, help them grow, help them be healthier too, you know? So something like that I think will be a neat thing to bring in. We have to get the infrastructure in place first. Yeah. I mean, it's something, yes, I definitely want to try to do, um, you know, while we're here. But we, we got to get that infrastructure in place first.
Well, solid.
Right now, so you figure we haven't been here, we've been here a year and a half. And since we've been here. But here's, but the thing is, is what you see when you go down Route 3 right now is you see water sewer lines sitting on the side of Route 3. Okay, that's the action that you didn't have before we got here. That's the infrastructure. Whenever that ties in, that's not tied to water sewer, the Hopyard, all the way up to Open Park. But it's going through the industrial area, okay? Whenever that gets in, that's going to make a huge difference. Because the property along Route 3, that before, nobody wants to come in a big, you know, pick a big stock, big box store, you know, anybody, a restaurant, a brewery, anybody. If they've got to come in there and they've got to come out of pocket with 20 or 30 million dollars to put a water sewer line in, it's not feasible. Whenever the water sewer lines there, now it's feasible, okay? You see what's going to happen? And it's going in right now. It's dug up, the pipe's going in the ground, it's already getting covered up. You know?
I can answer that one. And, and what I wanted to jump in earlier is it's called in the economic development world and our new county administrator is big on economic development. That is what he's known for in the state of Virginia. It's called site readiness. So businesses look for sites that are ready to come in and they don't have to do a lot of work. And there's a tier from one to five. We, I think five is the highest. We don't have very many fives. But you asked about the infrastructure. So right now with the ARPA funds, they have to be expended by November 1st of 2026. So the project at Perkins Corner by consent order has to be offline by January 1st of 2027. So that infrastructure is slated to be completed by November 1st of 2026 because those are the deadlines that are imposed on the money. I mean, the biggest part that people don't realize, and I've learned in the last year, is getting the easements on the property. That took over nine months to negotiate the easements to go on people's property because a lot of people ask, why was the infrastructure not in the middle of the median of VDOT? Well, you might have seen those who've lived here a long time, Ferry Farm, they did an infrastructure project there for water and sewer many, several, maybe it might have been even five years ago now. That didn't go over very well. That was, that was not well received by VDOT. So they have said, absolutely not, you cannot put it in the median, no more water sewer projects in the median. So that's why it took a little longer to get the easements because we had to talk to landowners and make agreements with landowners. So it is a long process. People don't realize how long these processes take. And then we have regulatory issues and we have to get it approved. So it's, I wish we could just wave a wand and make it happen overnight. But for that particular project, it should be done by November 1st of 2026.
But if property owners allow you to put it in, that makes it a lot easier, a lot simpler. But there were some delays and it got to happen. And we had complaints from people saying, why don't the trees to come down? Well, you have a problem putting pipe in the ground and digging through there without the trees coming down. So, you know, those are some of the challenges that you deal with though. Is trees or water sewer?
Go ahead, man.
Hey, next question.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Hamm. I have a couple of questions. One is on the rezoning. Um, what do you hope to accomplish and how will this benefit property owners and county citizens? And the second one is in regards to the subdivision that's going in at Hazel Nut Lane. There's only one entrance in and out. Was anything ever decided on another exit in case of emergency, for example, fire? We are talking about people in 75 townhomes and 24 homes. Plus there's already three homeowners on that property on the entrance. So, um, it's, it's just still another big problem. It's Owens Drive. It's Rhodes Payne.
Oh, okay, Walnut Hill.
Walnut Hill, I thought it was Walnut Hill, but you know.
When you said Hazel, I was confused.
It's Hazel Nut Lane, but it's Walnut Hill.
I do know that project in particular, VDOT has, VDOT and any of these projects has to look at it. And VDOT maybe has different opinions than you and I might have about ingress and egress and how to get in and out. And they make final decisions on what is approvable for entrance and exits. And I know I argue with all the time about VDOT. We mentioned Mr. Simonoff earlier about the bridge. I argued with them many times about that didn't seem right to get on Roseland Road. But they said, no, it's absolutely fine with our data and our modeling, so.
Yeah, I guess when there's a ton of accidents there, then it may might wise up.
A lot of times they only do things based on crash data.
The only other thing I, I have is it's coming in the future, the data centers, the solar, all that. How is, um, what are y'all going to do about our fire and rescue and our sheriff's department? Because they're going to be taxed. If something goes on in your, there, you know, for the data centers, they're promising a, a new ladder truck and everything for the firemen, that's great. So how is all these people, the firemen, how is that all going to work? I mean, aren't, are they going to hire more firemen, more sheriff's department people? I mean, I just see issues coming. You have more data centers and nothing to.
It, it's interesting that you bring up the data centers and the ladder truck because, um, I've had citizens, constituents, because I'm, that's my district. And they're like, no, we don't want a fire truck. We don't need a ladder truck. You're talking about a data center, okay? If the people's in there, that's why you have escape. I mean, they have to build a building with a fire escape. They have to have ways to get out of there. If we get a ladder truck, we have to, even if they proffer to pay for it for us, now you got to have somewhere to park it, you got to have firefighters, you got to have the maintenance, you got to have all that other costs that come to us because the people don't want to use a fire escape? Let the, let the servers burn, okay? But don't put the cost on us for a ladder truck that we don't need because they build a building that's, that's taller. Okay, it's got sprinkler systems, it's got all that.
I don't disagree, so.
Yeah, so I'm against the ladder truck or, or doing a ladder truck just because the data center's there myself. Yes, sir?
Sir, can you come up and talk to the microphone so that others can hear it?
The data center is going to give this county some money and I agree. But I agree with what you were saying about the identity of what this county should be. I moved into this county from Fredericksburg. I've been in Virginia for over 33 years now. I moved into this county because I wanted to get away from Fredericksburg. If you bring all this stuff here, then you're just bringing Fredericksburg out here too. And that does not help us. This data center is going to increase traffic. The developer told us in the planning commission that the data center is going to increase traffic on the Route 3 corridor. They have to make three special places for it by 5,000 to 7,000 vehicles. That doesn't do us any good. That just makes our commute horrible. It makes it hard for all of us there. They're saying they're going to be self-contained, but as far as water, okay? But when they said that we are self-contained, they're waiting for you guys to put in the infrastructure so they cannot be self-contained and actually come into our water and sewage. They, even the developer even said that. The whole idea about the ladder truck is to support the 95-foot tall building that they're talking about building because we have nothing right now in King George that could handle that. Even, I, I doubt very much, even the city of Fredericksburg can send Tower 1 to come over here and help with that. It's not going to change anything. They already offered that as a proffer. I don't know where you guys know what's going on with the planning commission with that right now. I don't know where you stand on that. I don't think it's made it that far to you guys yet. But this is stuff that's coming up.
Yeah, sure. So can I get your name real quick?
Bill Hyer.
Bill Hyer?
H-Y-E-R.
Okay.
I live, I live over in Hopyard, so that'll help you.
Okay, no. So I, yeah, and, and feel free to reach out to me and we can get together and talk for more than two minutes at a time. Um, but, so on the data center, one data center was approved before we came in office, that was Amazon, okay? And people ask, what about Amazon? Amazon can build. So, okay, nobody is stopping Amazon from building. Amazon could go build. The only reason Amazon started doing something today is because we did not approve their, uh, their agreement that allowed them to get two-thirds of their tax dollars back from us. So that's why I understand what's happening there. The, the other data center, the G E V, that just came and briefed at the planning commission, that right there, they are, um, going to buy some of, uh, basically the Taylor farm. But that is still in the industrial area, okay? So it's still in that, that, so for the comp plan, that area is for where industry goes. That's where it's supposed to go.
It's for industrial, I know that.
Yeah, so it doesn't.
Not sunk for that specific, it's zoned for agricultural.
It is zoned agricultural, so that's, okay, so this is good. We bring, I get a chance to talk about that here because, because I've asked people, say, well, it's zoned agricultural. It's in the industrial area. So if, if you owned, you know, a couple hundred acres of land in that area that the, somebody had done this comp plan and said, you know what? If we build, uh, if we don't have industry in King George, we're going to put it here. But you happen to own 200 acres there. Do you want to pay industrial taxes on your 200 acres just because it's in that industrial area? Or do you want to leave it agricultural and let you pay agricultural taxes on it? No, you're going to want agricultural taxes. You're going to want to farm it and you don't want to be taxed industrial. That's why it's zoned agricultural because you don't want to screw the people who are, it was corn and soybeans until the point where you're selling it, but it's, but it's in the industrial area. So if it makes sense, you know, if you understand that, it would have been very wrong to go to Burley Taylor and say, you know what, you need to pay industrial taxes on your corn property. That would not be good. So. But, no, for.
Exactly what they brought up. That's, there's three, there's three measures, there's three measures right now from the planning commission to look at to rezone that area. Plus they're also talking about the highway corridor issues that are in place. That's the third one and the second one was about.
Right, but it's in the industrial area.
Right.
Yeah, but what, what he's saying is, is, is what he's saying, I got it. But what he's saying is it's not fair to charge a farmer who's planting soybeans for industrial taxes. So of course you're not, that's right, you're not going to do that. Huh? I, I know, I know, but he, he's, the reason why it's. No, he's saying the reason why it's not zoned industrial, like the way you're, like in zoned industrial because you're not going to rip off some farmer guy right now. So it's agriculture, but it's in the comp plan to be industrial. So that makes perfect sense.
So.
Are you aware of the gentleman that owns Bloomia?
I'm sorry?
The gentleman that owns Bloomia, the, the Bloomia agricultural part. I'm saying the name wrong. I screw up names all the time, so forgive me.
You're talking about with that data center being proposed?
I know.
Data center is being proposed, right after that is Bloomia, B-L-O-M-I-A.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The gentleman that owned it, owned part of it before we sold it to Amazon was William Reed. He owned a considerable amount and he sold that to Amazon. I don't know about, I don't know who owns any remaining part of that.
The, the Bloomia part where the, where it's, the data center would stop and it's the company Bloomia, B-L-O-M-I-A. They, that the owner who has all that property over there, he said that if the, if the data center is built, he's going to leave King George because he can't, he doesn't want to play around with this, he doesn't want anything to happen to his grounds, the, the grounds. He was saying, right. So I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I'm, what I'm saying to you is, I know you don't have an answer for that right now. Well, I'm just saying, this is what this gentleman said at the last planning commission meeting, that you're going to lose him if he go, if this gets built there. Now, you know, you can't hold somebody hostage, I get that. You can't hold a whole county hostage for something like that. But I'm just saying, these are the things that we all need to be aware of and be aware that these things are coming about.
Right, so there are, um, you know, there weren't any data, I own land near there. It's going to be impacted as well, uh, impacted by the landfill and such that I didn't know whenever I moved to King George, uh, in 2006. But that area, because I didn't know about a comp plan, like I said earlier. So I bought land, you know, that, you know, near an industrial area that I didn't know, um, for the comp plan. So whenever the county plans, what do you want to happen in the county? So, um, and, and the county to build the revenue needs businesses, smart business, okay? A data center going in industrial area is smart business. And I'm going to tell you why I, I say that. Because after it is built, you're talking about a couple hundred employees. That's not a lot of traffic.
They said 1,200 to 1,400 employees.
Yeah, I think, um.
I'm sorry?
Probably jury construction.
Jury construction.
They, they said that when construction is done, it's going to be 1,200 to 1,400 employees. While it's being built, that's going to be where you're going to see something around 3,000, 4,000 people because the traffic's going to increase from 5,000 to about 5,000 to 7,000 vehicles daily. That's what, that's what the developers said. I don't know if it's true or not.
So the ones that I've toured and I've toured them because I, I want to find out about them. I haven't seen more than 100 to 150 employees.
Okay.
That are in a building every single day, monitoring, that's what I.
They only have like 30 to 50 people per shift to keep things running. I mean, you could janitorial staff and they've got a few technicians in the earning room.
Right. I understand that. You had the IT part and then you had the security part.
It's going in, in the, in the area for the comp plan that was designated for industrial purposes. The person who owns the land, Burley Taylor, if he wants to sell it, then, you know, he, he sells it. Um, that is, it's good, uh, revenue without bringing the traffic, very limited traffic into the county.
Five years later.
After.
Five years, five years later. This, this, this project's going to take five to seven years.
Oh, it'll take longer than that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's 15 years for the whole thing. It's, it's quite a while for all of it to be built out, right? But, but it's contained in the industrial area, brings revenue that if the people who are sitting up here after I'm gone, if they don't spend the money wantonly, you know, or they, you know, spend it wisely, it's going to take care of, you know, my kids, our grandkids. There's going to be money to pay teachers, there's going to be money to pay the fire departments, we, money to pay these people without having to increase the taxes. What happened in some of these other counties? And, uh, there's a gentleman who's very knowledgeable sitting in the front row. What happened in some of these other counties is they spent the money, okay? And, and they become a slave to the, to that and have more and more and more data centers. And I don't know what they do with the money, but, um, I think a lot of it really is the population growth. Because the population growth, so you need more schools, you need more fire, everything that went up with it. So it consumes that money. So we need to, we as a county and whoever's sitting in this seat after I'm gone needs to be smart on how they do it. I consider, you know, my role is to bring smart money into the county so that it replaces the taxes on individuals and, you know, with the businesses. It's not just the data center. That is the, the big, you know, those, that money is, is the big money without bringing the people, um, it's going to bring money into the county initially. It's going to, you know, restaurants or people working there, that's going to happen. But over a period of time, it's going to go, it's going to go back down. Um, the other thing that, that I picked up in the last planning commission, whenever Adam Lynch from Dahlgren briefed, was that, and it didn't, I didn't know this, 60% of the employees that work at Dahlgren don't live in King George.
That's correct. At the last, at the last planning commission, not the, there's one before that, the people that came to speak for the plan, for the data center was an electrical union, which is cool. I get that, they wanted jobs. But there was only two people from, about 35 people from the electrical union that were county residents. Everybody else was there and they got a chance to all speak and say, oh, it's going to bring jobs, it's going to bring this and it's going to bring that. And I, I get that. They want jobs. But those jobs go away after five years or six years or seven years, whatever it is after they get the initial building done. And then they're still going to be traveling. So how do we take, how do we look at that thing?
But you, look, there's other things too. So I, and I'll just put this out there in case people are watching, right? They need to be watching. You know, Spottavania got 150 million dollars upfront, so they didn't have to wait for it to get built. So, there are things that can happen, right, if they're watching, you know, I'm just letting them know that people at King George County could use 150 million dollars upfront, I'm just saying it, you know what I mean? I can't ask for it, can't ask for it to be proffered, but we don't have to wait for this thing to be constructed in order for us to start bringing in revenue to pay off our service authority, pay off our debt, build schools, and do all that things.
What I'm asking is that we be smart about it, because our quality of life is what counts. Every single one of you, your quality of life in this county is what counts. I moved into this county for my quality of life, all right, everybody in this room feels the same way, so I'm just asking for all of us to be smart about what we're doing. Don't look at it as, as a cash cow initially. Cash cow's great, but don't look at it as a cash cow initially.
You want to contain it.
I'm gonna jump in real quick, so we got about 10 minutes left, and, no, you're good, but, and, and if everybody wants to continue down this, I'm cool with that, but if there's other people that wanna change subjects, we, we've been on this topic for about 10, 15 minutes now, yes ma'am? No, you're good, thank you, appreciate you coming out.
A comment, no questions from me. My husband and I, we were in Stafford, and I agree with Mr. Strout, we moved out of there because of traffic. The drug problem and a lot of drunk driving, DUIs, we, we saw it all, especially the traffic. It took us about an hour to an hour and a half to get out of a street onto Route 1 and to go either left or right. The other thing I want to comment on is, we like King George, it's nice, it's rural, uh, I'm from Texas, Brownsville, right across Mexico. And, I'm used to the land, open land, and I like King George. I have two granddaughters, they're in North Carolina, they come and visit. The first time they came to King George, they said, olita, that means short for grandmother in Spanish, they said, lita, this place is beautiful. And I said, it is, isn't it, says, there's so much land, says, and look at the cows, your area. They said, if you know somebody that can let us go onto their farm and ask questions about what they grow, what the cows eat, and if they have horses, yeah. And, and they said, they, they were just so excited and mesmerized by the opened area, that, uh, I told them, I'll find someone that we can go and visit, if they let us, and that, you can ask them all the questions. Because I asked Mr. Strout one time, I said, is that hay that they grow out there? Or, no, I asked you, is that corn that they grow? And, uh, he told me there was hay, there's three different kinds of hay, another person told me, and I says, I only knew about one type, so. But anyway, I just wanted to make a comment, King George is nice, you don't want it to become Stafford, you don't want it to become FedExburg, you definitely don't want it to become Woodbridge, Lord, and all those areas. And yes, my husband and I were retired Marines, Persian Gulf veteran, 9/11, so, we are extremely proud of our veterans. I help veterans with their VA benefits, I volunteer for the disabled American veterans. I've been doing this for over 15 years, I have met many veterans that did not know that they could submit for their benefits, especially yet non-veterans. So if you know anyone that needs help, I'm at Hop Yard, okay? Wednesdays from 1 to 3, and I'll be glad to help anyone, doesn't matter.
You're at the community center, correct? That's where you're at, is the community center?
Yes, um, the Hop Yard Community Center, yes.
I'm not sure the microphone picked that up, so for folks that may be listening online, she helps with a disabled veteran, she's at the Hop Yard Community Center, every Wednesday, 1 to 3, did I get that right?
Yes, yes, and I just wanted to make that comment, you have one of the hardest jobs in the county, and I, I know that I appreciate what you do, I go into your website, I've learned a lot just by reading and things, and hopefully, we stay here for a long time.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I loved what you said, because I've talked to a lot of supervisors where there's been lots and lots of data centers, Lydon County, Prince William. And recently, one of the Prince William supervisors took me aside, and she votes for every data center, I'm just being honest. And she said, I've thought about how we've had these conversations about data centers, and she said, yes, the Lord's of money. But she said, for a community like King George, we from Prince William like to come to King George to get away from this. So we understand the attractive res- revenue, so maybe only having one or two or three is enough for you, please keep yourself rural, so we have someplace to remember and to come to, to get away. So that's always stuck with me, and we had this conversation in April, so you, you brought it up again in my heart, that, that, you know, there has, the, the Lord of the Money is good, but there, there could be a limit that we put some of the revenue, and we, we need to make an agreement on it, for the whole community is where that limit is.
The only thing I was happy to see was Quail, it's team foil.
I'll let them go. They fly across the road.
He shoots them.
You got a question?
Next question.
I don't have a question, but, uh, uh, good evening, my name's Lee Robotham, and, uh, I'm, I reside in the James Madison District, I'm not speaking in my board of directors role here this evening, I'm a citizen. So, what I want to say to all you guys is I want to encourage each one of you, because you guys do great work, and all the things that you've been doing have really been great. Your job's extremely difficult, but you were elected on certain values, accountability, transparency, fiscal responsibility, truthfulness. And one of my favorites above all is the Christian morals and values that all of you believe in. It's okay, the door's over there if you're not happy. Biblical values founded our country. Thank you. Biblical values founded this country as shown by the percentage, the percentage of scripture that is quoted in the documents, in the founding documents that our founders put in, much like the Declaration of Independence. Unfortunately, it's too bad they don't teach those facts in school anymore. Those values are what keep us thriving as a community and a society. Be steadfast, pray, and go with the decision that the Lord leads all of you to, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Kathy, and I live in Hop Yard, and I want to thank you all for what you do, but I also want to thank you Kathy for working free, and getting the water authority straightened out, I understand that it's a, a lot of work to do, a lot of work to do. Um, and, you know, she told me two years ago, I remember you saying, let's not sell it, give us a chance to fix it first. And you've had the ta- the chance, and you are fixing it, pretty quickly. So that, that's really great too, and y'all are fixing other things, you know, recouping lost money and things like that, so that's all wonderful. But I have a question about, um, the, uh, walking path at Hop Yard. And, I think I read on Facebook, or, now I got a blurb about, um, we had to do this midnight thing where we're suing the county along with Hazel, um, because there's this volleying back and forth about who's paying for the maintenance of the, um, yard, but I also wanted to know who, how much we're spending, the county. Because, I mean, I have a double thing going on here, the, the county is spending to fight the lawsuit. And, the other thing is, we have the lawsuit with Amazon, and so I wondered how much money we were spending for that, and that's it, thank you.
So, start with the Amazon thing, I, I keep seeing that, uh, being characterized as a lawsuit, there, there's no suit in terms of money. They're basically going back to the Board of Zoning Appeals and asking to be, a reconsideration for, to, to have that looked at again, um, so that, uh, they can do what they want to do. Um, so that's a different animal.
We, we try, and by the way, no one's putting up there that we won that in about 30 minutes, okay? So, everyone thinks because they're Amazon, they're right, and we have, they would have done suit us a long time ago if we were wrong, okay? It's, they know, anyway, I'm sorry.
And, we were talking earlier about the, the, the trail, um, so far we haven't spent any money on that, um, we're, um, we're kind of limited in what we can talk about because the suit is in place. But, as far as why we're not, um, interested in taking that on, um, that, someone earlier from the, from the HOA said it's costing the HOA about $70,000 a year to, to take care of that. Does everybody want to take on another $70,000 a year debt for the county? You know, just this last meeting, we found out that, uh, years and years ago, someone built a spur around the railroad and gifted that to the county. Well, we're paying about $5,000, what's the period of that, like, every few months?
Yeah, we have to maintain it.
Yeah, five grand to maintain that thing, you know, right, so people, please, stop helping us, you know? So, some of these gifts, you know, they, they, they're not free, you know, they, they come with a long-term expense that goes along with it. And, uh, um, there, there's a, a conversation earlier as well about the proffer. Um, a, a proffer is a gift that's offered, it's not something that we seek, it's not something we're allowed to ask for, um, we don't have to take it, you know? Um, that's really about all I'm comfortable talking about right now, just because of the suits in place, but, you guys?
No, I, I, that board meeting, I don't remember the date, it was like the, the, the 5th or 6th of April.
I think it was the 1st, April 1st, it was earlier.
Yeah, if you go back and look at YouTube, um, you can pull that up, and the county attorney's the one that briefed it, and he's the one that provided us the advice. So whenever I received a, a call, um, after that, I received a call from the HOA, Mr. Worley, and a call from Caesar Smith, uh, about it. You know, I said, I wish you would have called before then, because that's whenever we were briefed and told by the county attorney. And, and nobody mentioned it to me from the HOA, or from Hop Yard, and I'm your representative until then, until then, and, and, but, uh, if you go back and listen to the board that night, then you'll hear what the county attorney briefed on it, and he's the one that said that we didn't have to take it. And, and the, the argument wasn't between, you know, HOA or Hop Yard and the county, it really was between a Hop Yard and Hazel. Um, so, I think that's where that, you know, would have went, but we'll see now, because, uh, I guess, you know, like I said, we're being sued, and then the county attorney will be, will address it. But, uh, the, I also read that Hazel, it cost them 400, $400,000 to build it, so 70,000 a year seems like a whole lot to maintain it. Um, there's probably some landscaping companies or somebody that may do it for a little less, I don't know.
Let me clarify that. The 70, the 70, it's actually 74,000, it's not for annual maintenance. If the HOA ends up having to take this, if you look at the operation, maintenance, repair, replacement over the life cycle of that pavement, it would come to roughly 74,000 dollars a year for us to put in our reserves in order to cover that over that life cycle. We're not spending, we're not spending anything to maintain that trail, it's not our trail. Right now, it still belongs to Hazel, Hazel's maintaining it. It's if and when we get stuck with it, that's when it's gonna cost us a lot of money, which we don't think we should have to pay. You mentioned new proffer laws came into effect, 2016, I think. In the language of that proffer law, does it say, effective with the date of this new law, all proffer agreements that were negotiated prior are null and void?
I would have.
This agreement was October of 2003. Did the new law say everything before that is gone, just wiped out? I don't think so, I think you're wrong. Now, that's just clarification.
And I know we still have a lot of people in here, is, I encourage people to look online, uh, we've had an intern all spring that has been working on updating and making our website more accessible to you all. And you can see all our board documents, previous meetings, the minutes, and you can also go on King George County Official Content, that's a long name, on YouTube, that's our, that are, that's our webpage, and you can, if you got a lot of time on your hands, you can go back and look at every meeting of the planning commission, the services authority, not the school board, because they're a separate entity, and the board supervisors to January of 2020. If you really have a lot of time on your hands, you can watch all of them, and so, please, look out and contact us and give us some feedback. The biggest thing is, we love you all in the room because you're actually giving us feedback. King George County Official Content, I didn't pick the name, somebody else did.
So what was your wrap-up plan? Um, oh, I'm sorry, I.
We had two hours.
No, no, you're good, I didn't want.
We'll, we'll let you be the last questioner, and then we'll have a min- minute for each of these, uh, people to, uh, do a quick sum thanks.
Uh, uh, my, uh, so my name's David Ferraro, I live in Willow Hill, the last subdivision put outside Presidential Lakes, uh, by Westbrook Homes. So it's nice for me, but I'm also against the townhouses for the rezoning. Um, so you guys have addressed that a little bit, but I guess my question is, in terms of what can and can't be done, my understanding is that the current proposal is for a rezoning for townhouses instead of just regular houses, is that something that you guys, and, and you've mentioned like, hey, we're against this, you know, we, we don't want this. Is that something that you guys have a say in, like, can you say no to that rezoning? Uh, can you, uh, like, uh, can you communicate to us that the townhouses will not happen?
We, we absolutely can say no to the rezoning, and all of us, correct me if I'm wrong, please, I don't want to overstep my bounds, but I think all of us are against the rezoning of that for townhouses, um, a number of reasons. Some, the gentleman in the back, you know, shared a lot of reasons earlier, that there's other reasons that I have in addition to those, not instead of those. You know, there's a lot of reasons that that's not a good idea. As far as being able to put other homes in there, like, like, individual homes, I, I would have to look at it and find out, um, is it a by right thing, and how many homes would, you know, would, would he be able to put in there at this time? I, I don't know, unfortunately, but, uh, I think we're all against rezoning and turn it into 120 townhomes.
What I was gonna bring up is there's a process, it has to go in front of the planning commission, and then it comes to the board of supervisors. So it hasn't even gotten to the planning commission yet. And, there, there is quite a few developments that are still left over that are technically called by right, that were approved a very long time ago. Like, uh, the area of Cleveland Manor, there's a section that hasn't been developed yet, that is by right for a certain, allotted a certain zoning that somebody could come in today and put in some homes there. There's the section for Potomac Landing, that was approved in 1988, that has a by right to it. So there are some leftover assemblages, or parcels, or, or part of developments that are by right, and you can look that up online, what by right is.
So I think I heard you say, um, they want to rezone two commercial properties in addition to rezoning for the townhomes. If, if it's something that needs to be rezoned, it has to come before us, um, I'm not familiar with the commercial properties you're talking about, so I'd have to look into that. Oh, okay. Okay, I think I remember what you're talking about now, the, the, the backside of it will be the 122 town, or 21 townhomes, I think. And the front of it will be, uh, rezoned for McDonald's and a couple of other smaller business kind of things, gotcha. Um, that would have to come before us, and honestly, I don't, this is me speculating, I don't think you get one without the other, I don't think he's gonna do the one without the other. I could be mistaken, but it still has to come before us.
Yes ma'am, go right ahead. That's right.
Kuntz is a Realtor, she's sticking up for herself.
Yeah, we, we don't think all Realtors are evil, I work, I work with them every day in all aspects of my other job that actually pays me, besides this one. And my best friend since growing up is a Realtor, so, it's all good, and, you know, there, there's some good work out there. But, you know, there, there are, like, my dad's a pastor, there's good ones and there's bad ones, right? So, there's good Realtors and some bad ones, and I've, I've dealt with them all. In sales, and I'll end on this, they said I had a minute, so, in sales, they always say, I always, always used to say, I'm gonna answer all the questions you didn't ask, right? So let me give you some things, some things that we're working on, so, we, everyone knows we moved out of the old courthouse over here. Most of the time, King George, we have a history, we move out of something, we abandon it, it sits there for 10, 15 years, and then everyone complains, and then we have to tear it down. So what we plan on, right now, we have, uh, people coming in to check out what it's gonna take to refurbish that, because we have social services, that rents over here, we have IT, we have people all over the place. Historical Society, which Bob is one of my favorite people, he's a King George guy, my wife's on the Historical Society, okay? So I get it, we love history, but, so our plan right now is to centralize all the offices, so when you pull in this parking lot right here, you can go see the school board, you can walk over here and pay your taxes. You can, you, whatever it is you gotta do, you pull in, you're there doing it, right? And it also leaves us stuff like, like the property over here where the old high school is back here with the pit, pit, I played football in it, it's sacred ground, I get it. But, yeah, I think it'd also be great in King George, if we had a place in King George that was a place where we got together, like, I would love to have like the largest flea market in, in, in the, in a 100-mile status, you want to keep rural life? Right, that's the kind of stuff you want to do, I'd love to have a place where we have an actual fairground where our fall festival ended with like maybe some rides and a carnival, something for us to do as a community together. You want to keep rural life, you gotta have community things that you do, and that's a central spot, everything we do in this community is a sealstone. So anyone that comes in from anywhere else, they come in, they don't spend any money in King George, they come to our little thing, and they go back and they buy their gas here, we gotta figure out a way to get people to come into King George, spend their money, and then go back home, right, so that's a big part of it, right? Yeah, we, we, we gotta do these things, right, and, and something else that we're looking at too is, you know, people complain about there's no, there's not certain things up here like restaurants, things like that. At the county, I want to buy land, and I want to build a downtown King George, a place where you go up and it's built like, like Old Town Williamsburg to fit our northern neck, a place where there's restaurants and shops and businesses, and maybe some apartments that are on top of it for. that are on top of it for... That's, we've already, Kathy and I have already looked at some things, at some towns that are just, they look like you walked into an historic place, it fits our narrative, but it's a place where all the people from the northern neck and everywhere else that drive through here to go somewhere else, why not give them a place to stop and eat and spend their money, and then restaurants will come, and coffee shops will come, and all the things you want? You know, when I ran, I said, you know, they said, "You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make them drink." And I used to say, "Well, if you put salt in the oats, you can." So maybe we need to salt in the oats a little bit to give people the reason for stuff to be out here and stop trying to cram every little thing in there. And so that's a long drive for you people, too, from Hop Yard, you might go that way. So get some stuff on this side. So these are things, these are long-term plans. We had a meeting back in, what was it, April, Lower Apewill? And of just things that were most important to us. And these are some of the things that we want to do. And just, right now, we're trying to, I'm not going to let that property sit. If it's too much, I love that building, but if it's too much, tear it down, put something else, put up a water splash park for kids to hang out, I don't know. But something that, is something that brings the community back together a little bit, and just, and that's, that's the kind of stuff that we're working on. And we're going to get those things going. And I want to give people the reason to stop. I want to, one of my things, I want to bring an amphitheater. I'd love to bring an amphitheater to King George, where we can actually have musical talent come in. We're at a great location between Richmond and DC. People would drive, come here, watch, you know, their favorite musician practice, spend their money, and once again, go home, right? That's the type of stuff that we want to see. So that's just stuff we're working on, and I just end it with, "I'm doing the best I can for King George." All right? I'm doing the best I can. And I believe everybody up in here, you know, there is, there is no money that goes in my pocket from a developer. I would never sell out my county, you know, and that's from day one, when we stepped on the Amazon performance agreement. It's like, I'm not selling out my county for pennies. I'm not giving them 900 acres of land and letting them take our water and for nothing, right? You know, the Rappahannock River is number six on the endangered river list right now. And they're talking about, the aquifers are low. So people are like, "Well, we need more..." The aquifers are low in the state of Virginia. Okay, do we understand that water is a real issue on the state level? They're talking about this stuff, and they are, and I say this all the time, they're talking about water like it's gold. So if you're an environmentalist and you care about the environment, and you want more houses, you're fighting it. You're fighting your own self, right? Because what we have to do right now is slow things down. We're talking to people on the state level about what we can do to get those aquifers filled back up. Like, you know, Caroline County wants to get $14 million, 14 million gallons out of that river. And if everyone does that, that river's gone. Our way of life is gone. So there's things we got to do to protect it. You know, and one thing, you know, as far as I go, like, people say Amazon is going to take water out of the river. I will never let a data center take any water out of the ground or out of the river to cool anything. I will never let that happen. Somebody else might vote for it, but Bill Davis will not, okay? And it's just not, and those are things we're fighting for, and that's how we're going to protect our way of life. That's all we can do. All right? Thank you for your support, I appreciate it.
I want to thank you, Mr. Bendering. Mr. Bendering is a working, as a service authority, and I appreciate her support. I know the service authority has been having a problem for the last 15 years, and she is doing amazing job.
Thank you, Mr. Bendering.
One minute. One minute. One, 60 seconds. 59.9999 seconds. Go.
You might as well turn that clock off. I'm not a, I'm not a Realtor hater, so. I was actually going to be a Realtor one time. I took, I took that in college, in Tulane University. No, I said I was going to be a Realtor one time. So I'm not a Realtor hater, I got friends that are Realtors, as well as developers. So, you know, the thing is, is in this job, the way that I look at it is, it's not me, I represent people. And, and, you know, so I have to make decisions that even though I express my views on things, or I try to, my, I have to express things the way that I see the constituents, or the majority of the constituents, and what they want, and what's good for the county, what's good for them. Okay? So, it's not Ken Stroud appearance, or this is what Ken Stroud wants, or this is what Ken Stroud, I mean, it may, hopefully, it's the same thing as what the majority of the people want, and that's one of the reasons why I'm in office. But at the same time, it's what, it's what you guys want. And that's why all of us up here have told you that we really enjoy having you guys here tonight. You know, I would like to have this more often. This is the best attendance we've got at an event. And we do, we enjoy it, we need, we need this, I need this. Thank you.
I'll try to be even quicker. I'll be here afterward if anybody likes to talk to me, but I hope most of you know that know me. Whether you agree or don't agree, I try to make the best decisions for the citizens of King George County. Because where I grew up is almost like King George, believe it or not, they do exist in New Jersey. They're just up in the northwest corner. But, to the best of my ability, I try to defend the citizens of King George. And I've been at the center of this fight, especially on the state level, with making sure the citizens of Virginia come first for the water. Because if you don't have water, there's not much due. Money will just line your coffin if you don't have water. So if you want to talk to me afterwards, come on up.
Thank you, everybody.
So, y'all have heard me, a theme, if you've ever listened to any of our meetings, the theme is always saying, "Thank y'all for actually caring and coming out." This is about the sixth one of these that we've done, believe it or not, since the three of us took office. Attendance has been real sparse. We've had like five or six people here, five or six people there. We're getting better at advertising, I think, I hope so. The last one, I think we had about 20 or so, and tonight, we, it's standing room only, and then some. So thank y'all so much for coming out, I really appreciate that. That's one of the things about this job that I actually love. I like meeting people, I like being able to see people and know what their names are, and welcome y'all, and have a conversation. One of the things that I ran on was being a guardian of our resources, our water, our rural way of life, our, you know, our taxes, you know, our kids, being a guardian of those resources. And part of that, it's a team sport, you know? And I appreciate y'all being a part of the team, I appreciate you being here tonight for the folks that are online, thank y'all for dialing in. Reach out and talk to us, you know? We actually enjoy, dag on, for once, I'm the one going over. All right? But we very much enjoy engaging with y'all. And I offer to meet with folks for breakfast on Saturdays and Sundays all the time. So, I like IHOP, I like galleys when they're open, I like Uncle Dave's. I try to move around the county. So if you want to have a one-on-one conversation, reach out, let me know. I'm going to be at, IHOP is coming Sunday at 7:30 with a buddy. If y'all want to join us, come on out. Thank y'all very much.
Okay. And I'm going to wrap, wrap things up altogether. And you've heard, heard our Board of Supervisors, we've had a number of these in the past year and a half, like Sully said, you know, they were sparsely attended. And we had a problem tonight, okay, trying to accommodate all you folks. And, and so, in conversations, this, these things will be kept in mind. And we're going to do more of these, and I get that sense. And I learned a lot of things, how to be flexible and not be driven by the clock, so